I guess we have a captain audience.
Well, thank you for my newspaper. Okay, do I need to do?
You need to do what?
One.
I can.
Which one cannot do I need to do? See, probably the most important one, right? See.
Yeah.
Yep.
What do we have to do? Shallow Haveria. We'll just shallow on the end. There you go now, please. For our next selection, we will be performing Shallow Haveria.
Would you be scared if I stood over there or do you need me here?
Uh, I'd be scared.
You'd be scared, so you need to be here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will trust. Okay. So, outside in. Okay, I can't make any promises for me. All right.
Oh no, look at this foggy Christmas night. How will I brighten my slate tonight?
Look, it's a red nose reindeer!
It smells like a lightbulb.
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, will you brighten my slate tonight on this foggy Christmas night?
Please.
Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas to all and to all good night.
For our last selection, we will be performing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. Thank you for coming and hope you enjoy.
Oh, I'll just start though. Yeah, it's okay. Okay, you ready? Let me do this. That was a kind of thing. Okay.
And I want you to know that this is probably the song that you had the hardest time with. And did you notice I'm out there directing and you did it?
Yeah!
So, um, that's all of our songs except for one. Do you want us to wait till seven or should we?
Yeah, let's wait till the board will be up here seven.
Okay. Do you want us to maybe play a couple songs again?
We would love that.
Okay, let's hear it. Let's hear it. Seven.
Woo!
Can I, and then we'll wait? And then you do have one. So, do we wait for all of them to be seated?
So, do you want them to wait until everyone's out there seated or?
Um...
What school are you guys from?
Bay Shore.
Are you sure?
Yay!
You sounded great, we could hear you.
Oh, you could hear us?
Yeah, it was beautiful.
Yes, thank you.
Debbie, thank you for bringing these young musicians from Bay Shore. And I hear you guys have something for us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think we'll, we'll... Oh, you want to put in for you? Oh, yes.
Oh no, look at the fog on the foggy Christmas night. How will I brighten my slate tonight?
Look, it's a red-nosed reindeer!
It smells like a lightbulb.
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, will you brighten my slate tonight on this foggy Christmas night?
Please.
Ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas and to all good night.
For our last selection, we will be performing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. Thank you for having us. We'll see you tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you.
Wonderful handbell choir!
Yes.
And ladies and gentlemen, we have from our school board some... We just want to thank you so much. And I want to let you know I have two daughters that are in college now. And I was their principal when they went through elementary school. And the one thing they tell me when I say, "What was your favorite thing about elementary school?" It wasn't that their mother was their principal, it was that they thought to be in the handbell choir. So, you guys are fabulous and it's a wonderful opportunity for you to show what you know and display that beautiful music for us. So, thank you so much and have a great holiday.
Very nice.
Okay. So, ransom and shine. Off the double row. Off the double row. Okay, back in your row and then I'll tell them y'all.
Standing right here.
I know, I sit right there.
That's an important decision, we're like mediums. Non-verbal stuff is just too true.
This is what I wrote here. Well, no, I just wanted for non-action comes first.
Oh, okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yeah.
Uh, yeah, right over there on the table.
Okay. Yep, I just want to go get it, it's right there. All right.
I would not pursue it. I would not pursue it.
That makes you very stressed.
You should be. Yeah, if we go to a different room and have a song, I'll even share a board.
The ones I didn't, I wish I had.
Do what? Well, I have to. No, I just say if you have...
I'm just asking. And what comments? What executive session?
In what comment?
What comments have been made? And what is the session?
What, so is it too late to vote on it or not agenda?
It's, it's an action.
It's, it's up to vote.
Yeah, I would like to vote on it right now.
I think it's a little very funny. It's a little kind of nifty thing.
Do you owe you a dollar contract? Myself interest, of course, is actually comfortable.
Andy. Andy.
Just as a little...
Yeah, I asked him. I asked him. I guess I can ask him.
Some of them mean I have to make it. I mean, I have one right now.
Right, right, right.
I'm not gonna make it on this one. Not that I'm a father and being... I'm familiar with that. We've had so much... Yeah, 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 yeah. But, um... This is the last one. I, I can't...
But it can always...
I might just hit her on the cart and she comes with what you need.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think... Oh, I got some. Katie. I don't think that they...
In the past...
In the past, I guess...
Ends conversations.
Seven fifteen. This is what happens to me. I start later.
So, I'd like to bring to order the Monday, December seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school board meeting. All members are present except for Alyssa Snelling, who is excused. And at this time, if I can have Ms. Mitchell lead us in the flag seat, please.
I'd like to lead just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, and if our student representative would read... Oh, she forgot again, sorry. Thank you, Katie. If you could read the opening statement, please.
My name is Emily Hickox and I am the student representative to this board. We would like to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board values the student, or thinks the students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to turn in, to tune in to the municipality of Anchorage's Channel Nine or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also posted through the agenda in Board docs.
Thank you. And at this time, I would look for approval of agenda. Or a motion to move anything from old business to new business?
I would like to move.
I would like to move the discussion of the bond from old business to new business.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any dissension? Uh, agenda is approved with movement of old business, uh, bond proposal, two thousand and nineteen bond proposal to, uh, new business. Two action items. Okay. And at this time, um, let's go ahead and, uh, Ms. Mitchell? Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. Yeah, Student Advisory Board report, sorry about that. I need to put my glasses back on.
Um, our next meeting will be after the winter break and we're gonna do a resolution writing workshop to help students write resolutions that they can present to us and then hopefully to other bodies.
Anything else? Okay. And on our other committees, um, our communications committee, did we have a meeting?
Um, so our last communications committee meeting was on November fourteenth. Our next one will be on January sixteenth. And we, um, had our legislative, uh, meeting with our, um, Anchorage Legislative Caucus this morning to discuss our priorities for the year. And I, um, thank you to everybody who participated, both for the board, the superintendent, and the staff who were there and put in a lot of time, uh, preparing for that. I thought that it was very informative and we got some really good questions from our legislators and, um, I, I thought it was good for them to hear what we're focusing on and I think they're in line with a lot of our priorities. So, thank you.
Okay, and our governance meeting?
We haven't met since the last meeting. Uh, we will meet again this Wednesday at nine thirty in the board conference room and, um, everyone is welcome.
Thank you. And our finance committee did meet and the CAFR was reviewed and approved at a special meeting on twelve fourteen. I also have a, uh, a committee that's gonna report, and this is our SBHC report from John Garrity and Heather Ireland. Are they here? And the reason I've asked, uh, these two individuals to give us an update is because of the last meeting I went to, uh, there was concern about maybe having to, uh, close our health clinics. And I wanted the board to get an update on those clinics.
I'm not seeing the button on this one. Is that on? There we go, yes?
Nope. There you go.
Yeah? Oh, good, okay. Um, so my name's Heather Ireland, I'm the executive director for School Based Health Centers. And, um, just a quick timeline, in February of two thousand and eighteen, I approached the district about renewing our grant agreement, or memorandum of agreement. Uh, got a draft in May, um, and that was two weeks before I stopped working for the six weeks over the summer. Um, but that draft included a lot of insurance increases. And when I came to you guys in September, we were still negotiating what those increases were gonna look like. Um, because our fiscal sponsor, Christian Health Associates, had, um, done some research on what those were gonna cost and we were still sort of figuring it out of what policies were gonna be appropriate and feasible. So, initially, we said the biggest sticky wicket is the abuse and sexual molestation policy. And the initial bid that came back was like fifteen thousand dollars, but then when they gave the green light to go ahead and purchase it, it jumped up to over twenty, um, in, in completing the application. So, overall, the insurance increases are about thirty thousand dollars. Um, and the, uh, that policy alone was twenty-three thousand of that. So, Christian Health Associates is in a position where they can pay the seven for, for all the other insurances and seven towards the, um, abuse and molestation policy, but that leaves a little over sixteen thousand that School Based Health Center would need to pay. And our program has a budget of around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is like a, you know, pretty big percentage of, of the services that we would be providing, um, for something that ideally we'll never have to use. Um, so, that kind of begs the question of can our organization pay for that, that increased coverage? So, that was the discussion last week that, that Ms. Marsette participated in.
And do you have an...
And do you have an update on any of that for us, John?
Well, uh, talking to Heather, the municipality has already declined, taking on the clinic. Still trying to arrange a meeting with the Anchorage Neighborhood Health Clinic. They're still looking at, uh, they've reached out to Providence for an initial meeting with the director of the Providence Family Practice as in, uh, residence... the director of the Providence Family Practice as a residency program and then work through there. And then taking a look at other options. US take a look at the option of whether the Anchorage School District could contribute. The opinion that came back to us was that from a legal perspective, perspective, it would not be unlawful for a third party's district to contribute to the clinic's insurance premiums. However, the district should carefully evaluate whether it is appropriate and the optics and possible implications, including precedent for other business partners, vendors, service providers, and consultants that are subject to the same insurance requirements. So that was what we got back and we're waiting to hear, we really want to get that meeting with the Neighborhood Health Clinic.
Yeah, just exploring if there could be other partners or fiscal sponsors for the organization that already have this kind of coverage that we could kind of grandfather under in a less expensive way.
So what is the timeline based on the funding that you have now that we would be looking at if, as these things are being pursued, what would be your date that you can no longer operate?
Well, at this point, we're looking at, we've got an extension with our existing MOA with the district through January 30th. And as we discussed last week, having, you know, as we make progress towards identifying a potential other partner or something that, you know, gives us more time. But if, the conversation last week was if we went ahead and paid for this and had to each month pay the $1,600 a month for it, that then, you know, we'd be looking at running out of money in, you know, March, April, whereas, you know, pushing it out very, you know, since right now, we're not, we don't have to pay for it, we're, you know, okay for the spring semester. So, until we make a decision about where we're going with it.
And can you share a little bit about some of the services that you're now offering?
So we, you know, historically have done a lot of physical exams, but we've seen a little bit of a decrease in that as we've expanded into the high school. And especially at East, we're seeing a lot more what we call urgent care or problem-focused visits, you know, things like strep and UTI. And that's always been available at the middle school level, but just sheer odds with in a building of almost 2,000 kids, that that's happening more when we're there. So we're thinking about it.
And are we offering any mental health services?
Yeah, yeah, we are still in partnership with Volunteers of America at three of the four sites, providing counseling services there.
Do any board members have any questions or, yes, Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. Can you just clarify my understanding? So your only limitation on continuing with Christian Health Associates is a $16,000 shortfall from insurance premiums?
Correct.
And so if somebody in the community or a nonprofit chose to partner with School Based Health Clinics, then that wouldn't be an issue if somebody wanted to?
Yeah, correct. It's like, if we can cover that cost, Christian Health Associates would love for us to stay with them. We would like to stay with them, but it's just a matter of is it financially feasible? And could it be less expensive if we went with a different partner?
And how many students have, did you serve in the past year or so?
Like around 450. And we'll be maybe on target for about that same number this year potentially.
Any other comments from the board or questions? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you for the update. So my thought is I would certainly hate for this clinic to close because they do provide a service to our students and we have more and more students coming to us asking for mental health services and this is one avenue that we're able to provide some of those services. So I'm hoping that, you know, either as a district, I know we're limited in what we can do, but this is, you know, a lot of our partners are such as Boys and Girls, after-school programs, are for-profit, and this is a nonprofit, so I don't know if that leaves us open to be able to do something or not, but I think it's worth having the conversation, Dr. Bishop, if you could look further into that. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to public testimony. And at this time, I'm going to read our statement. And it says, "The board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table up front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You have three minutes to testify and you may begin speaking when the timer to my right, your left, appears on the screen and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. When the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." And at this time, I have Mark McArthur and Erin McArthur? And I think each one of you are going to testify separately.
Right. Super, thank you.
And you can just begin when you see the clock. There you go.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'm Mark McArthur and I have a second and fourth grader at Ravenwood Elementary School. I'd also like to thank you for your quick and proactive response over the last few weeks with the earthquake. That sure was nice to see, so thank you for that. And quickly, I'd like to move into a story that actually happened prior to the earthquake and I meant to come sooner, but things got in the way. So, I got a call from our principal one day, Kim Batista, who, by the way, I think is fabulous. And she asked me to come in and have a chat. She told me everything was okay, but she needed to tell me something. Turns out that my little boy had been punched in the face during art class. And during the course of the discussion, she asked that I speak with him and find out if there was anything more to that. And so that evening I did, and I found out that the boy who had punched him had become frustrated. He had made some drawings that probably shouldn't have been making and the kids at the table got on to him about it and he really didn't know how to handle it. And during the course of all this, he made some comments that were rather scary and I took those back to Kim Batista and she certainly did the right thing with it. And it prompted me to want to reach out and bring this to your attention. When I was speaking with Kim, I made a comment. I said, "Well, I'm sure glad that this young man is going to have the opportunity to speak with a counselor and to get some help here at Ravenwood." And Kim looked back at me and said, "Sadly, that's not going to happen, we don't have a counselor." And I was really shocked to hear that. And so it raised a couple of questions. And I wondered which schools do have counselors? And I wondered if there are criteria that would determine which schools would have counselors and which schools would not. I did ask him what can be done and she said that she was going to put this student on a waiting list and that was the most she could do to see a counselor. So, in summary, I wanted to bring this story to your attention because we need to know that mental health issues and the need for counseling is not localized to any one zip code and it affects everyone everywhere. I also wanted to urge the school board to work with ASD to do what you can do to provide counselors for all the schools. And finally, I would like to say that success in providing counseling services is something that's not going to look good on a balance sheet because the true benefits are incidences that don't happen and lives that are well-lived as productive members in our community. So thank you for my time today.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Dr. Erin McArthur and I have been a local pediatrician for the last 14 years. I want to express my concern with the behaviors that are being seen in the public schools throughout the Anchorage School District. There is a, in my time here, I have seen these behaviors escalate with more violent and threatening results. There is a nationwide issue with children's mental health needs and unfortunately, these needs are being expressed in the schools more and more. The solution seems to be to refer the children back to the pediatrician, but I need you to know that the resources I have for these kids is very limited. If a child is covered by Donelli Kid Care, it is almost impossible to get that child counseling in a timeframe of less than nine months if they ever get into counseling at all. The barriers include not enough outpatient resources, especially with regards to Donelli Kid Care reimbursement, as well as parental barriers with schedule and work commitments. Children need real-time, in-the-moment help with how to handle their emotions and help developing coping skills. We focus a lot in the community about how people should not be the bullies, but we do not give enough to the kids that are being bullied. When I brought this up to my fellow colleagues in pediatrics at our last department meeting at Providence, their response mirrored what I see and feel. I am here tonight to tell you, I believe a solution is to provide an onsite psychologist at the school level. Not only does this draw on a separate budget than Donelli Kid Care, but it provides the outlet help, outlet and help with critical thinking skills that are needed in the moment that they are needed. I realize the school budget is not limitless and already thin, but I imagine the resources used to help these kids after the fact when they have poor behavior is also large. These funds can be better spent with prevention rather than reaction. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you both for coming forward. Thank you. And Mike, you are next, Mike Bronson?
Thank you for having me again. My name is Mike Bronson. I'm a volunteer here in town with NAACP. And I want to preface by saying that we appreciate the work you do, we're on your side, and we wish the board a lot of success. But we have a suggestion tonight as we get into budget season a little bit, and that is to take advantage of the preliminary budget that you're looking at over the next few weeks. And by way of contrast, you might recall over the last year or two, once or twice, the staff has provided you what it calls a stress case. It's an option that the staff uses to show you all the bad things that could happen if the funding that you are asking for in the base case doesn't come through in Juneau. So what we're suggesting is you might think about the opposite. You might think, in addition to the base case foundation formula that's the core of your preliminary budget, you might think about adding a stretch case. They would outline in a very formal way for legislators and the public, all the good things that could happen to get you to your goals of academic proficiency improvement by way of additional funding, if you think that's necessary. So, and we're not starting from scratch. Just some suggestions and you know as much as anybody, if not more. We have the Picas Oden Report you might look to as a bit of a basis for a stretch case. You might look to the older ICA report regarding teacher compensation. You might look to the results of the recent Legislative Task Force on Reading. It just wrapped up last week. They have some great research they pulled together that we're hoping the legislators will use as a resource themselves. So you have, you have go-to places. The products of, that you pulled together over the years and the smart people that you've been able to hire recently as well. Some suggestions that would, that might be fodder for a stretch case, might be expanding the pre-K programs to all the elementary schools. To add universal screening for the early education kids. To add breadth and depth to your teacher capacity. To even strengthen your response to intervention and strengthen your math and reading intensive instruction. Those are ideas about what could constitute part of a stretch case. They could go to the assembly and the public and the legislature to show them in a formal way, in a project management approach, how you can reach your academic goal of 90% proficiency by the year 2020. So there's a thought to leave you with. I would just say thank you and let you know there's a fantastic opportunity in the preliminary budget.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay. So at this time, Dr. Bishop, we're ready for superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a very brief superintendent update. Last week, I reported on the first day back from the earthquake and today I am just going to share that our activities continue. So some good things happening in the district. We had Matthew Prinka, a teacher out at Igorver High School, just this past weekend, his teams won a few awards, one of them being the state championship for robotics that took place in Project First down in Juneau. So it finished at 4 o'clock this weekend and our kids did well. And the Nuclear Wolves won the tournament and were the championship team and they can go on to the regionals out of state. And they just talked about when they were there, they visited NOAA, UAF, UAS Fisheries in addition to doing the tournament. So we're pretty proud of them. Remember, they were, the Nuclear Wolves were right there, they were the students that showed us the demonstration. And I would like to say that we have a teacher at East High named Heather Roach and her husband is at Diamond High. And they, when I asked Matthew, one day talking to him in his class, how he got into this and why, he says, "Well, the Roaches, they got me into it." And now, he's beating them, so he's very proud. But we have some really terrific robotics leadership. And again, when we wanted to, this type of leadership between Heather and her husband as well as Mr. Prinka, when I talked to them about how the district could make an investment and they are high school teachers, the first thing they said was, "Please invest in the elementary schools." That's how we build programs. We build competencies and capacity in our youth first, our younger children first. And that just demonstrates the kind of leadership we have in ASD teachers. Additionally, from the Wolves High School, we have the championship rifle team. They just won first place and won regionals. And the first place was Emma McKenzie. She came in first place overall. So this was quite exciting and the first time that they had taken region. Also, at another one of our high schools, we had a service high game that Bartlett took second place and East took first. So we have some exciting news and Polar Plunge took place as well. And all of our high schools participated, raising thousands of dollars, taking the plunge for Special Olympics. And the first-ever ranch, as they call it, it's the combination of Chugak High and Greening Middle School, so Greening are the colts and Chugak are the mustangs. And so those horse animals hang out at the ranch, they call it. And so they had an assembly for welcoming the students after the first week and the Greening students, seventh and eighth graders, wore their Greening blue. And the other students had at the assembly this week their grade level colors and it was a great success. So we were really thrilled that things are coming along at the school. And it is, the teachers there are absolutely amazing. We talked to the Pro Start teacher this evening where she's sharing her kitchen and is enjoying having another teacher use the kitchen, share her space. She is displaced during sixth period, which is her planning time, but stays around to help the other teacher with her kids. And so it's really, their folks are just looking at the cup half-full as we move through the year and recover from the earthquake. And later this evening, we'll be accepting a grant and during that time, I do have the director of preschool here. And I just wanted to share good news that we did with the board that there is a total of approximately $1.7 million awarded to Anchorage School District for preschool, $280,000 of it for this year in planning, the rest to actually increase our preschool offerings. And the planning and preparation is occurring for six new classrooms and it's going to target lower middle-class schools for families that do not qualify for assistance programs and experience difficulty in affording private preschools. So it is targeted to that middle ground. We're using consultants. We're using consultants and other resources to help us plan for these. We are also incorporating these new preschools into inclusion classrooms. So they will be both special ed with students with needs, as well as general education. We also received a little over $250,000 with our partnership to continue the Head Start collaborative classroom. So one of our goals was to increase preschool classrooms. And our team, led by Chelsea Morrow, certainly went out and did the task and is bringing the resources to ASD. We know that our goal is to provide preschool for all kids who want it, and we're moving on that path to get there. And I hope that later in the meeting, you can write or vote affirmatively to accept the grant. And Chelsea will be here if there's any questions that you need answered. But I'm quite proud of, this is a position that we added a couple of years ago, and I'm very impressed with the young leadership in ASD. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And now, at this time, we have the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 079, the personnel report, October 8th, 2018, regular session minutes, and October 22nd, 2018, work session, executive and regular session minutes.
And if I get a student vote?
Yes.
And board members, please vote. And that passes with seven yays, one not present. And at this time, I'd like to read the statement for public testimony on action items. The procedures for agenda item testimony are as follows. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president and then seconded by another board member. I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate your interest in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representation vote, before finally calling on the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen.
Okay. We also need to vote on the uncontested student hearings. I move to expel the students associated with ASD incidents number 1277663, 1277852, and 1277979, as discussed in executive session.
And I won't ask for a student vote on this, but we have a second.
Second.
Okay. And if board members would vote, please. And that passes with six yays and one not present.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 091 and adopt a resolution supporting Site 27, Tudor Municipal Campus Subdivision, Track 2, as the proposed new student transportation site.
Second.
Okay. And at this time, we do have public testimony. If David Neese would come forward, please.
Yeah, this is the last one before the holiday, right? Okay. I'm ready when I see the clock. All right. So you are looking at a resolution supporting the move to Bus Barn, but one of the things you guys probably should consider, especially since you're going to be short some money this year, is the fact that your transportation system's operating a $3.8 million loss, projected loss. The reason the bus garage is where it's at, and Dave's probably the only one up there that's been here, anybody else been here before the '70s? Okay? Tudor Road didn't connect to Muldoon. It was a dead end. In fact, they sold a bumper sticker that said, "I survived driving Tudor Road both ways." So it was in the boon docks at the time, so it was a great place to put a bus garage. You've had it there for nearly 50 years. You've spent money on it. You've replaced your buses. You've raised your fleet. You've retired employees. In the summertime, I worked with one of your original bus trainer ladies. That's when lady bus drivers were very, very rare. And Grandma talks about when she worked at ASD, and the only people they could get here were the moms, because the moms weren't going down to the slope to drive for the oil companies. So you own a transportation system. The question is, why? And I've asked this question for over 10 years, and nobody can tell me except, you know, when we had that oil boom, we wanted to make sure that those people wouldn't run off to the slope. Forty years ago. So if you are going to have the municipality pick a new site for you, you need to probably ask yourself, like, could we make money selling that site? Could we divest ourselves of this cost of labor, transportation, and replacement of building and buses? And it's a yearly expense for you guys. We just passed bonds to buy more buses again. Why are you in the transportation industry when you have two or more private organizations in the city that can do it at a cost, and you've got $8 million in personnel and benefit costs? You have to take a look at how much of that is your employees. You're only transporting somewhere under 6,000 kids. So, you know, it's just, it's a really good opportunity to take a look at why you're doing the transportation element. You look at the other big five, almost none of them are in that game. So just an opportunity knocks with this resolution of, do we need to be in the bus transportation industry? Do we need to build a new building? Do we have to take on the added capital expenses? Or can we divest our fleet, say, you know, it's been great for 50 years, we're moving on. We've got other things we can do with our money from the state. We've got limited money. So I'd just like you to consider that. That's a little nut in your head kind of thing to think about is, why are you in a transportation business? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, we have an administrative report with George McCallas and, from the city, yes. Please come forward. I believe Robin's here.
Katie, can I get a hard, my computer just decided to take a walk. Can I get a hard copy of this resolution?
Of the resolution?
And you can begin when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Robin Ward with the Municipal Real Estate Department. The last time that I was with you, the site selection study had just been completed. And I gave you the overview of where, you know, what that study had to say and what our path forward was. And then at that point in time, we scheduled a community meeting so that we could notify the public of what the process for going forward with that study would be, according to code. And we had a very good turnout. In fact, the chair was there. We had a full house. And we went over, did an overview of what the study actually meant and, again, what the path forward would be. We applied to the Planning and Zoning Commission, according to code, for a hearing. And prior to that hearing, the planning staff, once they received the application, sent the application out to all the relevant departments for their comments. They opened it up for public comment and received, I believe, over 50 comments from the public interested parties. And then they created a staff report with their recommendations. The staff report from the planning department did recommend, if you remember, there were five sites that were evaluated. They recommended two at the, as a final selection that would go on to planning and zoning. The staff viewed all of the public comments, all of the comments from the departments, and they recommended Site 27 over Site 18 in their recommendation. And then the hearing was held last Monday night. So I'm here, George and I are here, to give you an update and answer any questions on what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission did hold a public hearing. There was quite a bit of testimony. The vast majority of that testimony, both written and at the meeting, were against Site 18. And if you remember, Site 18 is along Tudor Road in front of the AWW water reservoir sites, next to Benny Benson. And there were, there was quite a bit of testimony regarding everything from traffic, using that one access to Stuckigan Heights as for buses, the proximity, not only to Benny Benson, to the Botanical Gardens, to the fire station, air quality. So air quality, traffic, all of those issues were brought up in the testimony. There were also two, I believe, two public members that testified against 27. One of them did not want to move the buses at all. And the other one has experienced in the past issues with the air quality and reiterated that. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after hearing the testimony and asking questions and so on, did finally approve Site 27 as the recommended site. So the path forward from this point will, this resolution that they took action will be in front of them at their next meeting, which will be in January, and from there, it will go to the Assembly. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory commission to the Assembly. So the next hearing will be in front of the Anchorage Assembly, and they will make a determination whether to accept, modify, or reject that recommendation. And at that point, if it is approved, it will then begin what's called a conditional use permit process. It is a, the zoning on that parcel is public lines and institutions. The, it is the zoning on both of those parcels that were considered. And to allow a bus transportation facility, a conditional use permit is required by code. It's a very lengthy process. And issues, again, traffic, noise, air quality, all of those issues will have to be addressed in the conditional use permit and have to be addressed as far as mitigation. So I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Donlin?
So this resolution, the board is saying that of the options we were given, we support Site 27. I'm concerned because I'm still uncertain, as a board member, what kind of facility the municipality intends to build. So while I might be inclined to say that Site 27 is the best of the options that we've been given, first of all, we never asked for the Bus Barn to be moved in the first place. This is a municipality thing. And I don't want anybody out there thinking that this is our idea. And second, I don't want it to be taken as our support that we don't have some say in accepting what kind of facility is going to be built. Because there's a difference between where it's built and what's being built. And what's being built could address some of these neighborhood concerns, if the municipality chose to do that. But I'm just wondering, will we get an opportunity, as a board, to have any say in what kind of facility the city now intends to build on this site?
Madam Chair, board members. So as you may recall, the district staff met with municipal agencies over quite a long period of time, making a determination as to exactly what the requirements of the district are. Very specific requirements. As far as square footage, the square is the type of facilities, as far as how the layout had to be in order to allow the buses to be able to get through the site unencumbered. Also specified such things as wash rack internal, refueling, at least multiple refuelings sites, storage, office space, required number of bathrooms based on the size of the number of employees, also conference and training. So all of those requirements were laid out. They were also verified by a contractor hired by the municipality, and that was Dowell Engineers. So the facility requirements are well documented, and the agreement calls for us, us being, I'm using the word us, meaning the school district, is taken care of. In other words, the district will receive equal to or better than what they have today. In addition to that, the requirement is that the facilities meet all current codes. As you may know, the current facilities do not, they're grandfathered. So if there's any major modification in the future, then of course, all codes would have to be brought in to bear and upgraded. So the way this works out right now, the district will have the final say on the facilities because they'll be working with the municipality, and the municipality will be the developer on behalf of the district in this particular case. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
The district also will probably have at least a project manager involved in overseeing to make sure that the requirements of the district are met. In addition to that, like every project, at the end, when all the punch list items are basically taken care of, the district has to accept the facility. When I say have to, we have the option to accept it or not. And I would assume, I would assume that you would accept it if it meets all the requirements.
Are there any other questions from the board or comments? Ms. Hildy?
I just wanted to thank you for the process that you brought us through on the site selection and the routine and regular updates that you provided. So I thought it was very good. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, and it won't be the last one. I'll be back.
Mr. Donlin?
So I have two questions. First of all, will this come back before the board for that acceptance? Or is that an administrative function of the acceptance?
To answer your question, I know that you will have, you will have the opportunity to comment on the conditional use. You'll be one of the agencies that will need to comment on that. And then aft, I mean, if that is approved, you will have, I'm assuming, a final, we have to create agreement between you as ASD and the municipality on how this works, who pays for what, what the timeframe is, so on. That will be in some kind of an agreement. I don't know whether it would be administrative or come to the school board. That I don't know.
It would probably be a development agreement between the district and the municipality. And I would suggest that the development agreement would come back before this board so that, you know, you're comfortable with making sure that the district is properly taken care of.
And my second question. There was public concern regarding the diesel fumes. And I was wondering what has been included in the initial proposal of what's to be built that would mitigate the fumes?
So with the superintendent's okay, as soon as I get done, I would like to have Heather come up here, Heather Phelps, and she can explain to you what they're doing internally to try to, you know, deal with the fumes. But if you look at a map and you look to where the current facility is and then where the proposed facility is, it is quite a bit further away from the community that right now seems to have some angst regarding inversions and diesel fumes. However, there has not been a complaint registered for quite some time, I think, in fact, a couple of years regarding that. However, I'd rather have Heather explain to you the number of buses within the fleet that basically reduce those fumes and the number of buses over time that will also do that. that. And then I would further state that when you go through the conditional use process, mitigation efforts, et cetera, will be basically put in place based on complaints and concerns from folks when they testify. That's why you get another bite at the apple, because if in the conditional use process there is something in there that basically does not work for the district, then the district certainly has the option at that time as well to voice their concerns.
I would just like to add before Heather comes up, that I am very, very impressed with your student transportation staff. I've already heard over the last year, very positive comments. I live next to the student transportation facility, so, you know, our staff in that building of three hundred and some people notice when there are air quality issues, and they've, several people have told me what an improvement has been over the last couple of years, and it has been over three years since we've had a complaint about air quality there. So your staff is doing a great job there.
And Dave, this will actually be closer to me now, so I, I don't have any concerns. Based on the information I've gathered from this, so as a homeowner in that area, I'll just say I'm comfortable with it. Yes, Heather?
Good evening, thank you for the invite. I guess the question is about the buses that we are currently purchasing to help with the air quality control.
One moment. I'm sorry to interrupt, could you please give us your title?
Oh, I apologize. Heather Phelps, I'm the Senior Director of Transportation.
I'm newly appointed, she's replacing Chuck Moore, so Heather retired recently. Thank you.
So Chuck is very missed, but thank you very much. So right now, we run forty-four buses that we have currently got in our fleet that are clean air for diesel emissions. That is what we call a DEF bus, which is a diesel emission fluid bus. That diesel emissions work with a Cadillac, kind of like a Cadillac converter from like a gas engine, and when these two work together, what happens is it combusts the diesel emissions, so when it comes out of the tailpipe, it's coming out very clean. So what you're breathing and what you're seeing is a much cleaner air that comes from these forty-four buses. We are looking at eight more buses this year that will be also these DEF buses that will help with the clean air, and any buses that we are purchasing from here to the future, they are all now mandated to have these DEF, oh, pardon me, DEF kind of emissions on them.
So Heather, how many buses do we have that are still not have these emissions on them?
We have, I think there's fifty-eight buses still that are not emission at this point.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you, Heather, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else for Robin? All right, thank you. So at this time, I, is there any board discussion? Mr. Donlin?
Just sort of to follow up, Madam President, I tend to support the choice of Site 27, but I still haven't reached a decision about support for the actual move of the bus facility. And so I believe this resolution kind of glosses over that dichotomy. In the final resolve, it says the school board supports relocation of the Student Transportation Department to Site 27. I would support the selection of Site 27, but I have never thought that this was something that had to be done and the Student Transportation Department had, had to be moved.
Are we hearing an amendment? Mr. Donlin?
The resolve, let's see, I would, I would change the, the resolve, now therefore paragraph, the final paragraph on page one, that the Anchorage School Board supports the choice of Site 27 for the relocation of the Student Transportation Department.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment proposed? Ms. Hildy?
Can you clarify the amendment, I just pulled the memo where you were.
Instead of, it would strike, supports the relocation of the Student Transportation Department to Site 27 to supports the choice of Site 27 for the relocation of the Student Transportation Department. So that, the thought is that we would be on record in supporting the selection of Site 27 without necessarily supporting the relocation of the bus barn itself, which I don't do.
Ms. Coleman?
And anyone can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that our current transportation facility is on municipality land, not on Anchorage School District land. So I think whether or not it's going to actually be moved is not really our choice. And it's part of a larger development project, and I think everybody, I haven't heard anyone object to having take place, it seemed as a very positive thing. Your amendment doesn't really go against any of it, but if it can be interpreted as a, as a negative comment on the move, I, I think we need to work with the city on finding a different location so that the project that they envisioned for that site can go forward. And so I, I'm going to oppose the amendment. I endorse us cooperating and finding a, a site, and really the work of finding a site and constructing a site and everything that's being done for us.
Ms. Mitchell, did you have something?
I don't think.
Anyone else? We'll give Katie a moment to pull that amendment together, and then we'll take a vote, if there's no other discussion.
We have a moment.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I get the language.
Okay. Mr. Donlin, would you take a look at that verbiage and see if that translates to what you have proposed?
Yeah, just remove the, the, the between of and of.
Oh, yeah.
There's a small typo there, so.
Yeah, I got the typo.
Yeah. But it does, it captures what my intent here is, that our approval is of the choice of the site, not of the actual move itself.
Okay, and with that amendment, I would ask for a student vote?
Uh, yes.
And at this time, would the board please vote?
It's a vote yes.
A vote yes.
Mr. Foster, have you voted?
It shows that I voted.
It did not come through.
Okay.
It did go through.
Okay, thank you.
So that fails with three nays, three yays, and one not present. Now back to the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Okay, if there's no discussion on the main motion, I'll ask for a student vote.
Yes.
And board members, please vote.
No.
That passes with five yays, one nay, and one not present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum numbers 062 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant award from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for $280,792. This award is for the first year of a two-year grant to plan for and implement inclusive preschool classrooms at six elementary schools during the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Do we have any public testimony on this action item, memorandum 062? No public testimony, do we have any board discussion? Yes, Ms. Hildy?
Yeah, I just want to clarify my understanding, so we have special needs preschool, and this will be including not kids who qualify for low-income preschool into those special needs classrooms as an inclusion model?
Through the president, it, it would, and so what we're doing is, it's targeted for students that are not the, the loadies, because we're taking care of them, as well as the special education, but it's a new model to include special education students in with it, so they would, the qualifications for that would just be that they were by child fine, they were targeted as special needs.
And my concern is on the student teacher ratio, it's lower for preschool, right? And will those be maintained with this grant?
Correct, we have, it's going to be supported by three special education teachers and a .49 program, six teacher assistants, so there'll be additional staffing for that model.
So it'll be larger classrooms, more kids in the classroom?
May I just ask Chelsea Morrow to come forward?
Chelsea, if you could state your name and title, please.
Sure, I'm Chelsea Morrow, the preschool director.
Chelsea, my concern is, you know, we have maybe a special needs classroom, and having six kids in that classroom really allows you to provide the intensive care that those kids might need to get ready for kindergarten.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just am curious on how this will affect those students.
Sure, so the, we will have a total of seventeen students in each class, which mirrors our general education classrooms, but five of those kids will be on IEPs, and there'll be the classroom teacher, the teacher assistant, and then for every two classrooms will be an additional special education teacher that will deliver and provide services for those children.
And Madam President, might I add that best practices is for inclusion for typical peers. So if you can think about learning how to fish, and if you didn't know how to fish and you were all by yourself and couldn't look around to have good models about someone who's fishing, you know, or any other, something that you're learning, so this classroom and this model is actually the stellar model that's, that's out there for inclusiveness.
Yes, Ms. Hildy?
And I absolutely agree with that inclusion model, I just want to make sure that the supports are going to be there.
We actually wrote in additional supports because we're moving to a different and newer, or a new model that we haven't done before. So we wrote the grant to have those additional supports so that we can do it well and do it right.
Any other, Ms. Mitchell?
I guess my only question was, I know that we have trouble finding special ed teachers, is that going to be an issue here?
It always could be. We have a couple positions open right now on the special education preschool side because we have been growing in that area, and so we've been working with HR on our recruitment processes, and with UAA as new grads come out. I like to snag them as soon as I can and not let them get out of state.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, at this time, thank you, Chelsea. At this time, I'll ask for a student vote?
Yes.
And board, please vote. And that passes with six yays and one not present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 073 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for $84,000 to support four Anchorage School District alternative schools. Avail, Benny Benson, Crossroads, and Save.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this memorandum 073? No public testimony, do we have any board discussion? Okay, no board discussion, could I have our student vote, please?
Yes.
And at this time, would the board vote? That motion carries with six yays and one not present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 074 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the Alaska Deed in the amount of $114,525 for Aglaflin Secondary Schools' school-based transition services.
Second.
Is there any public comment on this action item, memorandum 074? No public comment, do we have any board discussion? No board discussion, could I have the student vote, please?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. Board members, please vote. And that motion passes with six yays and one not present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 087 and adopt the tentative agreement between the district and Anchorage Education Association, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period between July 1st, 2018, and June 30th, 2021.
Second.
And at this time, I have David Neese signed up for testimony.
All right. So, I hope you had time to read Dave Boyle's, uh, email to you guys today about his opinion on how the Janus decision and the current contract you have in front of you probably is borderline legal, if not illegal, with the section we removed. Um, the agency fee section, 719, um, basically Alaska statute requires it, because if you have somebody that is a Jehovah's Witness or something like that, they have the opportunity of not being in there. Janus did not strike agency fee, it struck you collecting the fees. And, uh, the workaround, that's been kinda interesting, because by striking language, I can put yourself in there, I would recommend that you go back to prior to 1988, look at their contracts, adopt the tentative agreement, but immediately reopen, uh, section 719. Because you really don't wanna be out of compliance where somebody can walk into court and go like, "You guys have got this bad." Um, there is language prior to 1988. Uh, when I joined the ASD in 1983, you did not have to belong to the union. So, we're back in exactly the same situation. So, any attempt to collect fees before you, um, have the person hired as an employee by any method would be the opt-out provision. And the, the part that bothers me the most in there is that you have in your agreement that the employee that wants to maybe not belong to the union has to talk to the union president. That's a lot like somebody walking into your restaurant and saying, "It'd be a real shame if this thing burned down." But, you know, for twenty bucks, buy guys to make sure it doesn't burn down. It's an intimidation strategy, and you gotta remove yourself from that situation. You, the employer, should have nothing to do with this. When you have the language in there that says they have to talk to the union president to opt out, the implication is they are automatically opted in. And the Supreme Court was very clear, opt-out language is unconstitutional, because it assumes you're gonna opt in. So, by all means, go ahead. You guys put a long slog into this, you did a lot of work, there's some good things, some bad things in it, there's stuff that you gotta go back and visit again. But you really need to cover yourself and protect yourself from, you've left yourself open on 719 by striking all the language. And by saying that the union president is the only person somebody talks to to get out of the union. They're not in the union, according to Janus. They should not have to talk. It should say if they wanna join, they can talk to the union president. You got it backwards in your language. So, that's just our opinion on that one. So, I would think that you probably wanna take a look at that and have a consult with your lawyer.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there any other public testimony on this memorandum, 087? Yes?
Um, I just wanted to make a note for the board on memorandum 087. It indicates a 1.2 million contribution to the health fund. That's the type of graph player, and it should be 1.9. Um, in the TA that's listed in board docs, it's correctly stated at 1.9.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Um, do we have an administrative report on this? Or do we wanna wait until there's any other board discussion?
Sure, if there's any discussion. If you need any information about any topics, we're happy to assist.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Hildy?
Um, could you just share what kind of, uh, legal review has been done of the contract as part of the process, I'm assuming, through the negotiation?
Sure. Madam President, um, to member Hildy, I'm gonna turn it over to Todd Hess.
And Mr. Hess, you might just wanna come up front, if you don't mind, 'cause there might be more questions.
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
In terms of a specific legal review of the tentative agreement, there has not been. However, in reference to agency fee, we have had multiple legal, uh, references and opinions related to that specific subject. Uh, consequent, uh, subsequent to the Supreme Court ruling.
Okay, is there any other board questions or comments? Mr. Foster?
I have a few items I'd like to move with respect to board intent, none of which have an impact on the tentative agreement. One of which has a direct impact on the memorandum of understanding with respect to the Elementary English Language Arts Program, and one of which has an indirect impact. So, let me start with the first that has a direct impact on the letter of understanding. I'd like to move that the board, uh, adopt intent language, that the stakeholder group should be expanded to include parent representation.
For the purposes of discussion, I'll second.
If you notice in the memorandum of, um, the letter of understanding with the middle school group, there's parent representation. I think it was only appropriate that we have parent representation on the English Language Arts as well.
Mr. Powell, I just...
And I know that some parents expressed interest in that. Um, I think some people stated that the fact that they weren't excluded meant they could be included. But I, I think your idea to make it explicit is a good one, and I would support the amendment. Although, I'm not sure if we can amend an MOU or not, but just a resolution.
Intent, it's just intent language. I'm not amending any of the documentation.
Understood.
So, we gotta be looking at this, right?
It's just intent language.
It's just intent language, there's no amendment.
Right.
No amendment to a TA. You can't amend the TA.
So, is there, would this be considered amendment to this?
No, no. Just, you could just adopt it.
This might be in order after we dispose of the TA.
Okay.
But, in essence, there's a motion on the floor.
Right. So, there's a motion on the floor. However, we can't amend the TA. So, this would be something after we voted on the TA?
I would encourage your consideration that it is intent language of the board that's related to the TA, and in the absence of it, I, uh, have deep reservations about supporting the TA. So, I would encourage your consideration of the intent language.
Okay, and so, do we vote on intent language, just? Mr. Hess, do you have a comment?
Only that there was no intent to exclude anyone, and that the administration has already had discussions about inclusion of, uh, of community members in the middle school, uh, group, as well as the English Language Arts group. And it was poor, poor explanation, but it was an oversight not to put that in there.
Would the intent language best be served in the memo itself and not in the TA? Just place it in the verbiage of the memo?
I have no objection to that.
Okay.
Can you get to that, Katie? So, just with a note in this motion, you're gonna add to the language of the memo?
Yes.
So, we would be voting on the TA or the memorandum?
We would continue to vote on the TA. However, the memorandum would reflect the statements of inclusive, inclusivity of parents for both middle school as well as English Language Arts. And we can make that correction. Um, noted now, I don't believe it needs to be voted on. It's not a resolution, it's simply in the memo language so that it is a public document that can be referenced.
Is there any dissension with that taking place? Okay. So noted, we'll add that to the memorandum. Is there any other discussion on, uh, 087? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
You know, I definitely recognize the reach, the value of reaching a multi-year contract, uh, with, uh, this group of employees. But I, I don't believe this agreement is in the best interest of our community. The terms of the agreement, um, do not include some of the, the concepts that I strongly supported. And I'm very concerned that it's gonna create a significant funding problem with the district that will result in negative impacts on our classrooms by increasing class sizes. My first concern that I articulated is that it fails to address the current shortage of special education teachers. I think we have a supply and demand problem with education teachers. I've raised this for more than a year now. I believe we should have been the first focus of any new wage funding in this TA. Should have been to address that concern with the fifty unfilled special education teacher positions we have by increasing the pay there to a market value to make us competitive on a national basis to get the teachers that are kids that are in special ed need. It also fails to address what I consider is a, uh, an unfairness in the current salary schedule, and that's that there's not significant enough recognition of the additional duties we've placed on teachers that have to teach multi-grade classes that aren't part of that particular school's curriculum system. In other words, there's schools out there where there's not enough kids for fourth grade and not enough kids for fifth grade class, and we've combined those and had teachers have to teach those combo classes, and it's very challenging. I have a lot of sympathy for the teachers that are put in that position. And I think that would have been another very high priority for utilizing additional wage expenditures, is to address that unfairness for those teachers that are forced in that position. I think there's also a certain element of unfairness to our other collective bargaining groups out there, because we've, uh, recognized that, as with this contract, these type of wage increases are gonna drive us into a negative, uh, budget situation. And that many of them have stepped forward and had zero increases in some of the same years that this contract provides, uh, salary increases to this particular collective bargaining group. Um, I think that's unfair to the other groups that, uh, negotiated in good faith and, and sort of bit the bullet on these kinds of increases in recognition of how important that is to our community. Because since ninety percent or more of our budget in the school district is salaries, it's hard to imagine a way this isn't gonna impact class size. And that is, I think, one of the absolute top priorities that our polling has indicated our parents and our community are, have set as their top priority also. I am concerned, although I'm, I'm starting to understand better about the committee process that's adopted in this system, uh, to make recommendations. I'm really happy to see that parents are involved in that more specifically now. But, as I mentioned in our meetings upon this, about this negotiation, our, our, our private meetings, that I was concerned about this. I wanted to make sure that my vote as an elected official is preserved, my right to vote no if I think something is not in the best interest of our community. And I didn't want people thinking that because it's in this contract, there's some sort of obligation on the part of the board to agree to something that a board member as an individual elected official believes is not in the best interest of the community. I don't think that the language itself compels that, but I'm not clear that that, since I wasn't directly involved in the negotiations, that, you know, what the exact understanding there is regarding that. But I didn't want anybody to think that by any kind of agreement to this TA, um, I as an individual board member was giving up my right to make an objective evaluation regarding what might come back from these committees and make a determination best on what I think would be the best public policy for, and best interest of our community. And finally, I'm very concerned that the final increased total monetary office, offer, offer, uh, doesn't come with a plan on how we're gonna deal with it in the budget. I've asked that question multiple times. It's a lot of money, the impact this contract has. And right now, we don't have a plan on how to deal with it. And I'm concerned what that's gonna result to our classrooms and how that's gonna affect our kids. Um, if I had a better understanding of ways that we could fill this potential ten million dollar gap, which six point five million seems to be related to this contract for just next year, then I would be more inclined to support it. But I'm concerned, I don't know how we're gonna do that yet. And we're right up, coming up on the budget. And I'm very concerned that we're gonna be forced to look at increases in class sizes to accomplish that. So, without that, knowing that upfront, makes it very difficult to make this kind of a commitment, uh, put us that much farther in the hole as far as, uh, balancing the budget for next year. Since unlike the legislature or the assembly, we don't have authority to increase our revenues. We, we can only budget based on what we actually get. So, we don't have, you know, we've heard some testimonies tonight, you should develop a budget, ask for more than you have. Well, that, that's, that's an option when a public body has some sort of revenue authority, but it's much more difficult when you don't. Because you, you don't have those public policy options to make those calls, to generate additional revenue. So, I don't think this meets those kinds of priorities that I just articulated, that I've been talking about for the last year and a half. I wish it did, because I think there was an opportunity here to really address some of the current needs, uh, in the district. And, um, I'm sorry it met resistance, because I think especially the sped, the special education teachers shortage is a serious national problem. It's not just a problem with our district. It's simply a matter of supply and demand. Uh, we have to be competitive for those classes of teachers. They're tough, tough jobs, and it's hard to keep people doing those jobs. They're such tough jobs. And I wish this contract did address that more directly and, uh, also address the, uh, what we've asked our teachers to, that are teaching combo grade classes to, to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Scarlett, is there any other board discussion or comments? Ms. Hildy, and then Mr. Foster.
I just wanna thank everybody for, um, how long and hard they worked on reaching this tentative agreement. Um, through the summer, people from AEA working as well, and, um, really attempting to come up with a long-term solution so that we can start addressing, um, and focusing on some of the other issues in our district. These contract negotiations have been going on for a long time. I don't think it's a, you know, perfect pie-in-the-sky contract that's gonna make everything easy for us now, but it is a good contract. Um, I do have concerns on how it's gonna affect class sizes, and that's something we have to address as a board. Um, but I, you know, I expect to support the tentative agreement, and I just, uh, I wanna share my appreciation for how hard everyone worked to get to this point.
Mr. Foster?
I do wanna echo some of the comments that board member Donnelly's made with respect to shortages that the district is experiencing, um, and not just in special ed. I think if you look carefully at the higher poverty schools in the district, we have some higher turnover and vacancy rates and challenges there for linked positions in science, tech, engineering, and math. Uh, in addition, we're having challenges finding a diverse group of teachers to serve our populations in the at-risk schools. And that's clearly a policy issue that boards around the country are addressing that we failed to do here. Um, and I'm sort of struck by the amount of talk, but not much action on the part of the board in that area. Um, and finally, I think we have an opportunity to, uh, look at a compensation study to find out where we're having vacancies and what kind of salary and benefit... out where we're having vacancies and what kind of salary and benefit packages we need to offer in order to start to fill those. I would draw your attention to the study done for the Department of Administration by the university, looking at what kind of wage levels we need to attract and retain. And the last time that was done, Anchorage needed a plus 10% to get into that space in general, and that doesn't include the areas where we're having shortages. So I think the, it's incumbent on the board, if they're serious about filling vacancies with highly trained and skilled individuals, that they conduct the compensation survey so they know how much they need to offer in order to build their workforce. That's pretty standard operating procedure. I don't believe it was done here when I looked through the packet in the briefing book, so I have to echo Board Members Donnelly's concerns that there's a lost opportunity, and I want to encourage the collective consideration of engaging in a compensation survey so that you can begin to address those issues and not wait for the next contract.
Mr. Hallman?
Yeah, having been involved in bargaining far more than I ever envisioned when I first became an adult, this is my second rendition of adulthood, and it's pretty different. It is contentious, and I think because it's the one time in, in how we conduct ourselves where we have to agree. And I was fortunate enough to work in a school where you could walk in and discuss things, disagree with, or argue with the principal at any time, but it was also done under the umbrella of the knowledge that at some point, any point, she was going to make a decision, and that was what we were going to do. And that is how we function on a day-to-day basis. If we stopped and went around and gathered employee complaints, we could do that for quite a while, and we could try to resolve them, but the truth is, we would make decisions and move ahead simply in order to keep going. And this kind of comes around to the fact that in most cases, we listen to issues or complaints, we don't act on them directly, we wait for bargaining to deal with all of those, and that may be one of the reasons bargaining seems so hard. To my knowledge, the two committees established by MOU are fairly unprecedented, and, and I think both people, both sides realize that we had a pretty complicated issue, and if we resolved it in advance of a TA, we were probably going to wait a long time to get a TA out of it. And, and the other issues within the TA complicated everything. And so I know from a certificated staff viewpoint, it's, it's a nervous step, it's a, it's a big trust thing, it's the old falling backwards trick, and we guarantee we'll catch you some distance off the floor, but we're not going to say exactly what distance. And, and I think it's a huge test for the district that will say to staff how much we're really listening. When we, when we, I'm sorry, when we vote on a contract like this, it always has things in it that none of us like, or some of us don't like, and it has some things in it that a few of us do. The question is, when these committees come back, can we take their decisions with the same weight and treat them in the same way? And you're right, we all will have a limit to where we're going to say, I hear what you're saying, but we can't do that, but we hopefully will be at a place where we see the results we're going to get, we feel the discomfort, and we take that step anyway. And if we get to a point where staff understands we're doing that and they're doing that, I think a lot of the contentiousness will go away. When people feel like they're just being overruled, that their voices aren't heard, that their contribution may get said but not factored into the equation, I think that's how we get to some of the frustration that we've seen over the past year or so. So I, I do think that, that when our bargaining team has gone out and bargained in good faith for us as a board, we have an obligation to accept that. Unless we, we think there's a serious defect, I don't think there is. I'm happy to vote yes on it, and I'm happy to see it be a three-year, but I also, as Mr. Foster alluded, I hope that, that we can take maybe some of those same issues that Mr. Donnelly brought up and say, well, let's don't wait three years to try to fix this, let's talk about it now. And we would expect a good faith response from AEA, and just as they expect a good faith response from us when things come up in between these votes. And I think if we can move to making that happen, then, then contract renewals won't be quite the, the huge speed bump that they have been for so long because we, we will have ironed out some of those issues along the way, and that's what I would hope that, that would kind of become the future. So I'm, I'm happy to vote yes to it, and I hope it's not an end to major revisions that take the district forward, but hopefully just clear a lot of debris off the deck so that talks on specific issues can be done on just that and not be all tangled up in a 75-page document.
Ms. Mitchell?
I agree with a lot of the issues that were raised, I do, I am thankful that we have a contract that we are going to be voting on. I'm really grateful that it's three years, I'm glad that we, it's, I agree with Ms. Hildy also that it's, it's a tough situation that we're in because money is tight and nobody wants to make cuts in other areas, and yet it is nice to be able to reward our really dedicated, wonderful, talented, hardworking teachers with a pay raise and as well as some other things. I think we do need to take a look at our issues with attracting sped teachers, attracting some of these specialties, and particularly a diversity issue as well, and I think that as we look to strengthen and expand programs like Educators Rising, maybe come up with an ANSEP type of thing that's around education, possibly even at the state level, maybe we could have something like the WHAMMY program for medicine, but for educators, where we will help pay for some people to go into education because if we can grow our own here in Alaska, we know that they're much more likely to stay, and they know what they're getting into, and they know the situation. So hopefully, we can continue these discussions. I'd like Mr. Foster's idea of setting up a, some type of a group to look at this, or study to look at this down the road, but I am glad that for now, we do have a three-year tentative agreement, and is it perfect? No, but I, as Mr. Hallman said, I'm very happy to support it.
Any other board comments or questions? I would just like to echo what everyone else has said and state that I do support the contract and will be voting yes for it. However, I do realize that we are under some budget constraints, and yes, we need to look, as we always do in the future, at how we can compensate or, you know, look at our, our gaps in teacher recruitment. I, I think we're still challenged by the same thing, and that's monetary, you know, getting funds from the state to do those things. The other thing that I, I, I can't help but say this, and I, you know, this is nothing against you, Mr. Foster, but this board also had an opportunity to support diversity, and we set an example, and we didn't do that. So I'm just, I, you know, I feel very strongly about that when we talk about diversity within our schools, and we talk about the administration supporting diversity, our board has to support diversity too, and so I just felt like I needed to make that comment. So if there's no other comments, I'd like to have student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. Thank you, Mr. Hes. The motion passes with four yays, two nays, and one not present to vote.
I move to approve Anchorage or ASD memorandum 076 and authorize the superintendent to prepare the Anchorage School District's fiscal 1920 preliminary financial plan and budget in accordance with the financial projections and budget guidance set forth in this memorandum.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on memorandum 076? No testimony, is there any board discussion? Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, for the folks out there, to say that this is, the projected revenues for the FY 2019-20 operating year are $788 million. That's just astounding. I mean, it's, you know, such a significant number. Sometimes people say, you know, they're not that, they don't seem to be that interested in what the school district's doing, or why. I mean, that number alone would make every person in Anchorage interested into our schools functioning well and efficiently, and it's just an astounding amount of money. Thank you.
Any other board comments or, yes, Mr. Foster?
I'd like to move some amendments to the budget development guidelines. I've got one, two, three. I've got three amendments I'd like to propose. The first I'd like to propose is I'd like to move that we assume that no direct classroom instruction teaching positions will be reduced as a result of projected enrollment declines.
Is that for when we create our new budget?
I'm amending the budget development guidelines to include that assumption.
Is there a second?
I'm second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. From time to time in prior years, you'll notice that the district, rather than assuming a reduction in its revenues, has made the argument in Juno, and sometimes successfully, sometimes not, that it will increase revenues through advocacy for specific things, in this case, for teachers in the classroom. So I think there's at least a reasonable expectation that specific advocacy for teachers in the classroom would have some probability of success, and I think holding sort of the current teaching staff harmless from reductions also significantly reduces the sort of transitional issues that would occur in spring staffing if you assume enrollment reductions and go through that staffing exercise. So I think there's some value in developing a budget that doesn't reduce the teaching positions and assumes a revenue increment.
I was thinking about what you were saying.
So, Mr. Foster, are, what you're basically saying is that if we do have some attrition at the end of this year to retirements and that type of thing, that we would refill those positions, so we maintain the number of FTEs?
Yes.
Mr. Hallman?
And I have to admit, I'm, I think I'm still in the process of understanding, even though you, you put this out in writing a little bit earlier. The adjustment to FTE based on the fluctuation in students has always made a lot of sense to me. Of course, we're in the context of where FTE gets adjusted for all kinds of other reasons. If, if we were, say, had been locked in at a class size of 25 for most gen ed classes across the district, which, for the audience, that's a pure fiction, but it's a wonderful one. And there were minor adjustments, I can understand it, but the fact that enrollment drives revenue and the budget has to be adjusted to revenue, I'm not sure how this works. I guess the question is, what would the administration adjust if they can't adjust FTE for an enrollment drop?
Essentially, what this would do is say, we want to hold the positions constant as if there weren't no enrollment reduction in aggregate. Then reallocate the FTE to the school buildings as you would basically, based on that total aggregate FTE, which would mean you'd have a slight adjustment in the school class size down just a little bit based on the additional that you would have, and you'd reallocate it out. So it's really a way of holding your staffing level harmless for the enrollment decline.
Ms. Hildy?
Through the President, to Member Foster, how would you see this playing out functionally through the legislative process, or?
Essentially, we would ask for a revenue increment to keep teachers in the classroom in schools, and you could identify the specific schools where you're going to basically add an increment, whether it's a half an FTE or a full FTE depending on how it rounds out.
Ms. Hildy?
Sorry, I just need a little further clarification. I like, I like details. Are you saying we would ask the legislature for grants or changes to the base student allocation, or specific funding for a specific school?
We would ask for funds to support teachers in classrooms, and you could delineate which schools would be receiving essentially the hold harmless provision.
Mr. Donnelly?
There's a lot of merit to this idea. My challenge at this point in time, supporting it, is the fact that we're, with the contract we just agreed to, we're looking at a $10.5 million deficit for the next fiscal year that we have to figure out as a board how to fill that gap already. Even if we found a way to fill the transportation gap through other means, funding gap, which is going to really be difficult and painful for the community, we would still be faced with 6.5 million, and that's about equal to 65 teaching positions. So, and that is, and that 65 is anticipating already a layoff equal to the number of students reduc- being reduced, the projections for the reduction in students next year. So it's really a challenge to, to meet the goal that this particular proposal would meet, proposes. I, I think it's a worthy proposal, but I just need to think more about just what else has to go. I mean, the, the, the changing the dynamics of the discussion from one that's really teacher-centered, I think is very positive because that's something that both the public and the legislature can't understand, whereas everything else the school district does is more complex and more difficult to get your, your thoughts around because it's such a huge operation and so diverse, all the things that we do other than just teachers. So I think there's a lot of merit in that. I just want to think about just how big a whole of, in other things that we create by doing, if we, if we go with this proposal.
One moment, Mr. Foster, before you respond to that, Mr. Hallman?
Well, and I, and I think it's along the same lines. You're going to put me in a position of arguing against this, and I'll always hate you a little bit for that.
Get used to it.
And it goes to the technical thing of what we're doing in a budget, not, not your con- I like your concept, but we're building a budget based on expected revenues. In other words, looking at the governor's budget, looking at the previous BSA, looking at, my understanding is, in every case, our financial people look for tangible things by which they can say, this is the amount of money we expect to get, and they build a budget to fit that number. And, and that's why when, when you look at if we're going to lose 2,000 students, that has a direct impact that you can do math on with the BSA and say, well, our revenue is going to decrease by this amount, so we, we, we can do that. And that's maybe one of the more straightforward things of a mathematical model that unfortunately gets built in complete absence of any assurance of what we're going to get, period. And, and I think that's the beginning of the psychosis that's the Anchorage School District budget every year, is that we, we- is that we, we have to build that budget way in advance of any actual commitment or knowledge about what it's going to be. And then we go through this period of revisions as things become more clear. So, on one hand, I, I can fully support saying, if it turns out that our projection comes in under what we expect it to be, we want to maintain staff, give them assurance, maintain the quality of what we do, and go advocate for a number that supports that. But legally, I think we have to build a budget that matches something that we can say is what we're expecting to get. And, and that's why I ask again, I don't know what else we can do that saves enough money to meet those numbers, other than reduce positions, unfortunately.
Or put the monkey on our own back and put the revenue raising burden on us collectively to advocate. That's the difference.
Ms. Hilding.
Oh, thank you. And again, I think I'm in line with member Holloman. I understand the objective, but the pro forma just will create a budget, and the budget is what we present to the legislature, and the budget has to be balanced. So if we follow that guidance, something will have to come off of the budget to present it to the legislature.
Mr. Foster.
Or you adjust your revenues. It's not the first time the district has done it. And I would encourage your consideration of basically either framing it as a supplemental request as a package with an incremental revenue, or build it as your base budget and set an expectation of, this is what's required to do the work. And match it with an explicit increment that you can advocate for. The alternative is to go through the churn that you're all used to that displaces a lot of folks. And allow me to suggest, when we didn't do that churn one year, it made a big difference. So I would like to actively and strongly encourage your consideration of flipping the assumption that we cut to last year's essentially projection and look forward to where we believe we can reasonably advocate. And if you're not successful, you have a fund balance that you can draw upon. That's the risk.
So, I'd like to say something. I know I'm not supposed to speak, but. One of the things I do agree with is I would like to see a budget A and B. And I think what we need to look at is a budget that we could take to the legislators and say, we would like to increase our counselors. We would like to lower class sizes from K through 2. And we've talked about this, I've, I've heard this from community members, that we should go to the legislative asking for what we need. We can always have our budget A or B or whatever that balances, but I think we need to go with, to the legislative and ask for what we need to be able to fund education. Ms. Dr. Bishop and then Ms. Holloman.
So, I don't necessarily need, think we need a budget B, we just need a plan B. Because your, your budget is just your revenue and expenditure plan. We don't know, to member Holloman's point, sometimes we don't find out what that revenue is until June. But we can create a budget that we believe of the needs and where we are. It's just that we're under a timeline of May 15th, that if we don't have an answer, teachers are under contract, even non-tenured and tenured. So the only reductions that can be made after that point is anyone on the non-certificated side. Certificated people are principals, nurses, you know, principals.
Nurses.
What's that?
Nurses are actually under the.
Oh, they're A's. Oh, a different one. No, they're certificated. Yeah, they're in AEA.
Right.
Yeah, so nurses would be in this group as well, counselors. So, and our plan B would be, okay, now what do we do? Like, how do we make up the money? But your actual budget, there's no magic number in there. We just begin the budget with what we believe we will get. Now we could begin the budget with what we need and what we want. It's just that there are statutory requirements in making our decision, to your point. And then your options are narrowed if something doesn't come through. And we would have to highly communicate what we're doing. Otherwise, we would take that surprise, you know, to be one of the people who would be, you know, part of the, the reductions. Because you can reduce your staffing certificated-wise under two provisions. And one is the decrease in the basic need, and another is a decrease in students, enrollment. But it's up, it's a larger amount than we actually experience, I believe. It would be very difficult to do that. So I would say that I don't necessarily believe we need two budgets. What we need is a budget with a plan, but then have a plan B for staffing and hiring if, if that doesn't come to fruition by the end of the legislative session, which in the past few years it hasn't, it's just gone on. So we would need to change our plan in how we're going to carry out whatever revenue we get. Because at the bottom line, the budget you turn in just has to be balanced. And then when you receive your money, you just have to balance it again to ensure it. But communicating that well out in front about our plan and what we're doing would have to come, because otherwise, there will be people in the gap.
Ms. Holloman.
And anyone should feel free to correct me if I'm wrong in this, but the, the budget number that we take has to have basis in fact. Of course, it's all projection. But I, I know at times we base the budget not simply on what we had last year, but on what we expected. It, it may be because the governor's announced he's seeking an increase in the BSA. Or if a, say, a strong contingent of the Anchorage delegation said it was their intent to achieve a certain number. My understanding is the district would, if they felt that was viable, incorporate it into the budget and use that number, which might be an optimistic number. But again, an optimistic number based on realities in the legislature. My, my concern is that if we go to the Anchorage Assembly when we have to, and say, we, we know the legislature doesn't think they're going to fund us at this level, but, but we think we can make it happen, that, that we introduce another layer of unreality into, into the situation that, that may cause us to, to not be taken as seriously. I, I do think that we can, can and have advocated for a number greater than, than what our budget is. Based on the fact, you know, we built a budget that we think will fit in to what we see coming, but these are reasons why it should be greater than that. And, and it results in the district making a trip, one of the happier trips back to the Assembly in, in June in order to get the budget limitation elevated. So I, my concern is if they, if our staff picks a realistic number and they don't have a, a reduction of positions, and I want to make real clear, it's a completely separate thing than layoffs, but they don't have reduction in positions as a way to adjust, just based on student revenue, that, again, it quickly becomes millions of dollars. And what, what alternative do we have if we're losing a couple of thousand students, which works out to 10 or 15 teachers, I think, which is all over a million dollars? What, what do we actually adjust for that?
I would encourage your collective consideration of looking at the magnitude of the fund balance discretion that you have with four votes and the magnitude of the fund balance discretion you have with five votes.
Ms. Hilding.
You know, I appreciate the spirit with which the amendment is offered, and reducing class size is an important goal that I think we all value. I don't like the constraints that this maybe puts on us that I don't think are necessary. We already shared the goal and will work as we adjust budgets through funding to hopefully address that as best we can. So I don't plan to support the amendment.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Ms. Mitchell.
Well, I fundamentally really like the direction of the amendment, but I guess I am, I am concerned about how it would play out. I mean, to the superintendent's point, if we did go in and say, you know, our current allocation based on BSA is whatever it is, 500 million, 450 million, and we're going to assume that we keep that regardless of our enrollment changes, and we don't get the funding and we don't find that out until June, I, I, you know, it, I guess I'd have to, it's a tough decision to make right now without really being able to dig into, what would that do to our fund balance if we really had to cover that?
Through the President, just to add, we, the last two budget sessions, you, we've plugged the gap with 4 million in fund balance to do that.
The thing I would ask is, we are counting on, in that $10 million shortfall, we are counting on the one-time funding coming through, correct?
Yes.
Correct, this pro forma is built on that, yes.
So it could actually be a bigger deficit if we don't get that one-time funding? Do we know how much that would be?
If we didn't have it, it was, Andy Ratliff, how much is the? It's a, in addition to this year, what was the next year?
For next year, we were expecting about 8.4 million in state money. Last year, they provided 5.7, and an additional, let's say around $2 million in the local contribution tied to it.
Madam President, basically, I would say, I mean, if we want to build a budget on what even testimony was about what we need, we could, you know, make it to where class sizes are smaller or that we don't have any reductions. It's just that when the time comes, that the deadlines are coming soon, we'd have to communicate quite a bit. And I guess a point here would be that the fingers wouldn't be pointed at the board, the fingers would be pointed south. I mean, that's a positive thing, a little bit.
Right.
Our state is funding.
So do we have any other discussion on this amendment? So at this time, I'm going to ask for student vote?
No.
And board vote, please. And that motion fails with five nay, one yay, and one not present at vote. So just, just a clarification, I want to remind the board that this is our time to give budget development guidance on this. And I know that we spoke before on our, our wish list. And so, my guidance, of course, I have two items that I, I'd like to propose. And one is that we reduce class sizes K through 2, and that we hire five more counselors.
Madam President, is that an amendment similar to what Mr. Foster did?
Yes, it is. That I would like to give as guidance, an amendment for guidance to the budget.
I'll second the first half of that, which is reducing class size in K through 2.
Okay, well, and I'll, I'll split that amendment. So I'll make the first amendment to reduce class sizes K through, class size K through 2nd grade. Oh, K through 3, sorry. K through 3. Okay, so board discussion. Ms. Mitchell.
Well, I very much support reducing class sizes, particularly in our early years where it really can help us get kids where they need to be for their future success. And I guess it's, I wonder, I, I like that direction. I wonder if we want to be more specific, or if that's something that we, I mean, that, that is kind of vague. We don't, we aren't telling them how much to reduce class size to. And I do, yeah, I definitely support this.
Ms. Hilding.
I would just need to know what it's coming at the expense of before I, I mean, I want K through 2 lower class sizes, but I have to look at the budget. And does that mean somebody else is getting bigger classes? Does it mean we're cutting music, you know? I, I need to know what the reality is, or if we're doing this aspirational budget building.
Well, I think what we're doing is we're providing guidance. So this isn't necessarily to say, we are going to get a budget that we have to approve. This is just providing guidance. If we get a budget that says, okay, we're going to reduce K through 3, but this is what we're having to do to do that, the board has the option to vote on that budget. Mr. Holloman.
I support what Ms. Hilding just said. I mean, I would offer to amend it and say we reduce class sizes in pre-K through 12. If we reduce class sizes in K through 2, which is an awesome thing, it's got to come from somewhere. And, and if we don't look at where it comes from, they're all great ideas. But we, in, in contrast, if we're asked to actually make the change, knowing what the negative side is, and I think as a board, we have a responsibility to know what that negative side is. We want smaller class sizes across the board. We want more electives and versatility in middle level and high school. We, we have a responsibility to every single student in this district to do the very best we can for them next year. And, and unfortunately, in K through 2 focus pays big dividends eventually. But, but even so, we have a responsibility to that fifth-year senior at the same time to not compromise their education in order to benefit another. And this is part of the tough, tough choices. I, I can't support something that feels great without understanding what it is we would have to give up in order to achieve that.
So I'm going to ask one question. Are we not going to provide any guidance on this budget because we do not know what the ramifications of those, of that guidance is? Because that's basically what I'm hearing. Mr. Donlin.
Well, I, I think there's steps towards, I think we all share the goal, and this board has jumped through all kinds of hoops to hold down class sizes in the lower grades. I think, I don't want to speak for everybody here, but I think I can, actually, that we all want to prioritize that, and we have shown that in our past budgets because we have held the lower grades harmless as much as possible. So there is a, there is a middle ground here. We could also just give the guidance that we don't want to see any increases in those, those lower grades. It wouldn't, you know, so there's, there's different levels here of that, which we have done in the past. We've said, we're, you know, we're going to look at, we've got to do cuts, but we're not going to do them in K through 2 or 3 or 4. The other point I want to make, you walk in some of our classrooms now, and there's, there's 32 kids in 5th grade. There's 33. I mean, I don't know how we're going to get more desks in some of these classrooms. I mean, there, it's, it's crowded, you know, in there now. I mean, I'm very concerned about class sizes going up too. I don't, I, I just don't know how it's all going to work at this point.
So, again, I'm going to ask, what would be, Mr. Foster?
I want to speak in favor of the proposed budget guidance, I think we made a presentation today at lunch that's consistent with the proposed guidance that's been offered, I think we've basically put the ask before the legislature, and I think there's a distinct possibility, given the interest in reading and elementary education, that not only is this a, I think, a good way to build the budget, but it's very likely that we'll see the ability to receive these funds from state and local sources in exchange for some interesting accountability negotiations, so I'm in favor of the guidance that's been offered.
Ms. Mitchell.
So I agree with Ms. Hildy that I would not want to necessarily do this at the expense of somebody else, of Mr. Holloman, I, we do have an obligation to every student every year, and I spoke with a teacher at West who has thirty-seven students in three of his five classes. Now, to have a high school teacher teach almost two hundred kids is just crazy, we can't increase class sizes anywhere else either, so I would propose that this, the amendment that you offered is in the spirit of the first amendment that Mr. Foster offered, and that we build the budget with the funding that would allow this to happen on the revenue side, and, and go to the muni with the assumption that we will, we will hopefully get these funds from our legislators because they understand the needs that we have and the challenges that our students are facing, and that it's for the, you know, that long-term, this is going to be helpful to our entire state to make this investment, so that would be my, my recommendation, is we do an aspirational budget.
Ms. Holloman.
So I think I'm agreeing with Mr. Foster on this, although I'm not absolutely sure, but I, to some degree, for the purpose of clarity and, and a solid understanding of the process we've been engaged in, that we go build our budget in the usual way, but a provision for lowering class size in, say, K three as a S version, to borrow from the Assembly, to say, and this is how we do it, we either are taking from something we've got, or this is something we seek from the legislature or some other source of funding in order to implement, and in that way, we, we build our budget in a way that we're accustomed to, but at the same time, we, we have these options, sort of like going to the website and building that car from the, from the manufacturer, where you can add in this option package or that option package, and see how things mix up, but, but in that way, we would be identifying, if, if we move on this, then we see what we're giving up on the other side, it does make it our goal, I mean, it is something we want to do, and I don't for a minute want to pretend or send a message that we don't want to reduce class size in K three, but I, I do want a, the way forward to be at least as coherent as it has been, because part of the frustration in trying to build support for funding out of legislature from citizens is trying to explain to them the process we go through, because it's really crazy, it's not a sane process, it, it got helped tremendously last year when the legislature moved up their approval of education funding, but the fact that we build this elaborate budget based on a whole bunch of assumptions, most people don't understand that, they don't understand that we go to the Assembly with a budget that's built on conjecture, and they have to approve it, and then we continue to seek the funds to fulfill it through the legislature, and sometimes we get more, and sometimes we get less, there's, they're used to having a revenue figure, and you build a budget on that, and you go forward in kind of a logical way, this, because of the mechanics of when the legislature meets and when the fiscal year is, this is always all out of sync, so I, I want to keep it clear for staff, for the citizens that do understand it to the degree they do now, but also clarity for us about if we, if we do some of these add-ins that we want to do, what are we giving up, or are we basing it on an increase in funding from somewhere?
Madam President, a possible way to, to build that budget, to know we're moving forward, but having the ask and the revenue is we could request, similar to block grants, which is probably how the funds happen in transportation, how they could happen with K two, and that might elicit that negotiation with the outcomes, that if you take a block grant, you generally have to report on outcomes, I mean, that's the, you know, the, the means by that, but we could, in the budget, you know, under those items with grants, legislative grants, build that in for specific use of funds.
Mr. Donlin.
I, we've talked about it, I think there's no question, we're going to see legislation this session that's going to have some accountability for reading by, by a targeted grade, and we should absolutely be prepared with a, a proposal for how much that's going to cost to achieve that. The states that have been successful with those kinds of provisions have made a commitment to making sure that schools have the resources to get those kids up to that proficiency level, and we should be prepared to respond to that question, because I would strongly anticipate that it's coming.
Okay, is there any other further discussion on this amendment? Okay, if I got student vote, please.
No.
Board members, please vote. That motion passes with four yays and two nays, and one not present at vote. Mr. Foster.
My final amendment to the budget development guidelines, I'd like to move to provide supplemental class size reduction resources to help all the Eagle River Elementary School children and their families with their collective community recovery from the earthquake.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, board discussion.
I'd just like to highlight that I didn't indicate a specific number, I think it's a judgment number about what resources might be required, and I would allow that to sort of evolve over time as we take a look at, as the first, as the semester begins in January, just see the lay of the land and see what might be required to help out Eagle River.
Ms. Hildy.
I, I don't understand why it would be targeted to one area of the district when it would not just be targeted to schools damaged by an earthquake, and some of those damages haven't, maybe been fully fleshed out.
Mr. Foster.
You could narrow it, but I wouldn't want to presume that it's just the schools have been dislocated, I think you've got other schools who've had a lot of cleanup and transition as well, so I just don't want to presume which schools, I just want to suggest that Eagle River in particular has got at least two schools that are closed and relocated, so that there's going to be, I think, follow-on effects from that, and I just don't know what they are in detail, so that's why I left it open.
Ms. Hildy.
I, in fact, thought it was too narrowly tailored, I thought it should be just related to earthquake in general throughout our district, because there are, you know, students in Eagle River go across the district, there are schools beyond Eagle River area that are affected by the earthquake.
And I guess I would ask for clarification on resources, are we talking counselors, staff, I mean, teachers?
It's class size reductions, teachers.
Any other board discussion? Ms. Mitchell.
So again, I guess you're not talking about just the schools that were displaced, you're talking about all Eagle River schools.
I'm, I'm basically allowing the development to include more than just those schools, rather than presuming they're the only ones who may need some help.
No. Ms. Mitchell.
And, I'm sorry, just to clarify again, you're talking about starting in January.
This is the budget billed for next fall, so when I'm referring to January, I'm referring to the administration assessing how the schools are starting up and running as we get back from the break, to see where there might be additional resource requirements, so you can make a judgment about how you might adjust class size in the Eagle River schools.
Any other board discussion? Ms. Hildy.
Just for clarification, the zoning is Chugiac, Eagle River, are you, let me, including Chugiac in the?
Yes.
So that would need to be reflected in the amendment?
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment unless there's objection.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, student vote?
We're changing it to Eagle River and Chugiac.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Well, it says collective, and their collective community recovery.
Are we adding Chugiac?
Municipal zoning page, identifying zoning districts, lists as Chugiac, Eagle River.
Upstain.
Board members, please vote. So that motion fails with three nay and three yay and one not present at vote. Yes, Mr. Donlin.
With the contract we approved tonight, we're looking at a shortfall of over ten million dollars, combined with our shortfall in transportation for the next budget cycle, so it's going to be incredibly difficult to just hold classrooms harmless, let alone reduce actual classroom sizes, so I think a good direction to the administration is that if it's not possible to reduce the K through two classroom sizes to at least, that we should definitely hold harmless and not have any increase in classroom sizes from K through three, because that is consistent with our past policy of doing everything we can to protect the classroom sizes there, so I move that the board recommend to the administration, or set as a priority, that the K through three classroom size be held harmless, not be increased.
So are you, we just voted to lower the class size, so are you asking to reconsider that, or are you making another motion that would reverse that?
No, no, I'm, I'm doing a separate proposal, because I believe the first one's unrealistic, it's not going to happen, so as a backup to that, my motion doesn't include exactly the same grade, so it's not exactly the same subject matter, as a backup to that, if we can't reduce K through two class sizes, that we do not increase K through three class sizes, which is consistent with our past policy, we've tried to target it, all the cuts away from K through three, because we all agree we'd like to have smaller class sizes there, but we also recognize we may be, it may not be possible to do that, but at least not have cuts there.
Before we have any further discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions on this? And the first amendment, just for clarification, Mr. Donlin, was K through three?
Yes.
If there's no other discussion, student vote, please. Board members, please vote. Um, no, I need to re, uh, reboot, let me change. Secondly, reboot. Is it, I don't have anything here. Um, I think the log after we, I don't know. I think it works. One more time. Yeah, because we could reboot, we could perform it. Yeah. It could be done that way. This is just, we're just cutting our budget. Dina, Andy, would you reboot? Andy, would you reboot? I know, we have technical issues. So this motion passes with five yays, one nay, and one not present at vote. Okay, is there any other amendments to this memorandum? I, I do have one, because I think we've heard that counselors are very important in our schools, and that we're seeing more and more mental health issues, and, you know, the story that we heard from the person testifying that they couldn't even get to see that little boy who, who definitely had, you know, some issues until two weeks or whatever out, that can, kind of negates the issue of having someone there to talk to, and the fact that pediatricians, more kids are being referred to them, and they're nine months out on the waiting list to even get to see someone, I think it's more important ever that we do have counselors in our schools, we have, I believe, six schools now that do not have counselors. What I'd like to propose as a guidance is that we, and this was part of our presentation to the LIO legislatures today, and that is that we increase our counselors to have at least a counselor in every school. So I move that we have a counselor in every school within our district.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
I'm sorry, what? Yes, ASD has counselors in every school within the district.
Madam President, a lot of our schools have school numbers, just for clarification, they have twenty kids.
Okay.
What could you clarify, because that would be an enormous investment.
So, a counselor, how do I want to rephrase that, a counselor in, in every school district that has more than two hundred and fifty students, in every school that has more than two hundred and fifty students. Mr. Holloman.
There's a suggestion, perhaps on your first motion, you add at least part-time.
Okay.
With the idea that there would be some regular counseling services coming to every building, even if they don't have a full-time counselor.
Okay, would you make a suggestion on how to word that, Mr. Holloman?
The way you said it to begin with and then add at least part-time at the end of it. Yeah, to test your memory there.
This is, I move that ASD has a counselor in every school that has more than two hundred and fifty students. At least part-time. At the end, at least part-time?
So...
Counselors in every, part-time. You can put part-time or full-time, at least part-time.
A seconded. Thank you. Nobody did, but now I know. So the amendment is, I move that ASD has at least a part-time counselor in every school with more than two hundred and fifty students. And again, I revert back to the stories we've heard. Even my own grandson has had to wait two weeks to have a counselor come in and talk to him about some issues. I just think, and especially with the earthquake, some of the new trauma that our students are going through, I would like to see this added at least for guidance in our budget development. Any other board discussion? Ms. Mitchell?
Well, I've talked with several principals who feel that they don't have enough mental health support in their schools. And given all the issues that are in our society right now, I think having mental health support in our schools is critical. I guess I don't really know the difference between a counselor versus a social worker in the school and what's more appropriate at which level. So I, yeah, I support this. I don't know if it's specifically counselors or social workers or what the difference really is, but...
And Dr. Bishop, can you explain the difference between counselors and social workers?
Madam President, I don't think there's a universal definition of, between a social worker and a counselor. They are, work with, you know, people, kids and adults. And we just discussed, you know, whether it's working with groups, connecting with families, arranging services. There's quite a few job descriptions that either could do.
Thank you. Ms. Hilding?
Certification, sorry, certification is probably a prime difference that I see, which could impact salary because counselors are certified.
I think this is a wonderful priority. It's what I hear from principals at schools that don't have counselors. I hope in all of these recommendations, you know, it's taken with optimism and hope in what we can build, not as a, as a negative thing, but as something aspirational for us to work toward. But I expect to support this.
Well, it certainly guidance is what we are giving here tonight. Any other board comments? Ms. Mitchell?
Well, I was...
I was just reading, and I think I do agree with your wording on counselor. Apparently, a social worker can have the same kind of training that a counselor does, but a counselor in general can do a little bit more in terms of therapeutic things with the students. So I support what you just amended or proposed.
Any other board comments or discussion? Okay. Student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members please vote. And that motion passes with six yea's and one not present of vote. Mr. Donnelly?
I would move that the administration prepare a plan to, within the transportation budget, to close the four point three million dollar deficit that we have there.
Isn't that three?
We're providing guidance for the budget cycle.
Yes.
So I'm asking that the administration prepare a plan to close the four point three million dollar budget gap we have within the transportation budget.
Let me just ask a point of information before I second. Can we confirm the size of the pro forma budget gap in transportation?
Yes, through the President, the pro forma budget gap was three point eight, Liam.
Oh, it's three point eight now?
I'll second three point eight.
Okay, three point eight.
Four discussions? Three point eight? Yep. Mr. Donnelly, would you like to speak to that?
Well, we've passed a lot of resolutions or requests here for additional resources. We ought to give some guidance about where we'd like to see them explore reductions. And one of the areas that we have a real outstanding problem right now with is the transportation budget.
Sorry, there's a little motion over here.
And so the concept is just to see how much we'd have to reduce transportation services to actually close the existing gap we have.
Okay. Any other board discussion? Ms. Hilding?
I support Member Donnelly's amendment in that I want to see what's possible and then the burden is on the board to decide whether that's the direction we want to take, whether we take an aggressive effort to close that in what we have in our community or we just know what is needed and what sort of, maybe perhaps funding would have to come in to close it. Whatever avenue we choose, that responsibility lies with us. So I would appreciate knowing how to address that deficit.
Okay. Any other board discussion? Student vote, please.
Obstein.
Board vote. So that passes, that motion passes with six yea's and one not present. So at this time, due to...
Point order. Madam President, the previous question where we did some amendments. My amendment to say at least part-time was for your original motion for a counselor in every school.
Yes.
And what was finally posted was a counselor in every school of over two hundred and fifty at least part-time. And actually, what I, what I intended was that it would be at least part-time services to every school, if not full-time. So I didn't catch the wording when we actually voted on it. But I am wondering if other people were confused by that or missed that as well, if we can go back and correct that.
Were other board members confused by that or you voted on what you read?
I, I thought we were voting for providing at least part-time counseling services in every school. So, Mr. Holloman, I thought Mr. Holloman's amendment had been adopted by unanimous consent.
Ms. Hilding?
I voted on the amendment that was put on the board.
Okay. Is it the board's desire to re-vote on that amendment?
Well, he voted affirmative.
Right.
If it needs that clarity, I would move reconsideration, and I did vote in the affirmative.
I second that.
Okay. So at this time, we need to vote to reconsider. Hold on a second. Amendment number five. Move to reconsider amendment number five.
Yes, is that the one?
Yes. Board, our student vote?
Yes.
Board vote, please. Okay, and that passes with five yea, one nay, and one not present of vote. So amendment number five will be brought back up with the correction of all schools, part-time.
Okay. At least part-time.
At least part-time.
I know that ASD has at least a part-time counselor in every school within the district. You mean half FTE or service at every school? Because there's someone with just twenty kids. I think he means that every student would have access to a counselor. Part-time is not accessible.
Assume the balance. Assume the balance.
So make sure this is...
Amendment number five was...
Well, part-time is what we said.
Was it half-term or...
Part-time.
So this is what...
Yeah. So I move that ASD has at least a part-time counselor in every school within the district.
I second that.
Okay. So we will, student vote, please.
Can I make a comment first?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Ms. Mitchell?
You know, I just wanted to add that I think it really is important for students to have a relationship with a counselor. I think it's hard. I really commend what the district did in terms of making counselors available to students in every school. I think, though, that it's difficult for students to go to somebody they don't have a relationship with and open up to them about any kind of anxiety they may be feeling or PTSD or whatever. So I think one of the reasons that I really strongly support this, aside from the fact that our students do need, a lot of them need mental health support, and if we can give them that support in the moment, we can hopefully head off bigger problems. But I think it's important that they have that consistent person that they do get to know, just like our kids have their relationships with the SROs. So that's why I think it's really important that it's not ad hoc, but it is people committed to buildings and getting to know those students.
Mr. Holloman?
And with our discussion behind the bench, I envision it much like the existing specialists now, that you may have a full FTE, but they visit three, four, five, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty schools, whatever it takes to make that work.
Well, hopefully there'll be a little bit of an increase. So at this time, I take a board vote, please. And that passes with five yea, one nay, and not present of vote. So at this time...
Madam President, I know you want to put an end to this, but I have one further thing that I'd like some guidance from the administration on is the proposed reduction.
What do you say? Oh, yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Last budget cycle, I proposed reducing the number of assistant principals at those schools that had, already had three assistant principals or more. And I'd like the administration to consider a, what, the best way to reduce the number of assistant principals is because there may be some higher important need at some particular school that I'm not as familiar with as the administration is. But I would like to see a plan that the board could say yes or no to that would reduce the number of assistant principals out there.
So are you proposing an amendment?
It's not an amendment, we're giving guidance to...
Okay. Okay. So noted? He's just making that recommendation.
Aren't these all recommendations?
Yes. They are. Okay, so at this time, if we have any other amendments or discussion on this, I would call for a work session. We have our, we can either do a special session or we can do it in our next work session on January seventh. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward the AS memorandum zero eight eight, the two...
We have to vote on the main motion.
Oh, we have to vote on the main motion, sorry. We've had so many amendments, sorry. So we're voting on the main motion. So as amended. So... Yeah. So student vote. Yes. So board members, please vote. And that passes with five yea, one nay, and one not present of vote. And Andy, you'll be sure to pass those all along to Gem, right? So at this time, I'd like to bring forth ASD memorandum zero eight eight, two thousand and nineteen bond proposal.
Did you make the motion? Did you make the motion or is Dina Mitchell making the motion?
Oh. We already made the motion. To move it to action.
Move it to action.
Oh, right. But, right.
It's on your sheet. The last thing. Second page. Number eighty-eight. Second page. Do I write this? But it's not, it's unapproved. It's not imminent. It is, that's what we're bringing forward.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero eight eight, proposition one. District-wide building life extension, safety and security projects, including roof replacements and improvements, mechanical seismic safety, entryway security and code upgrades and planning and design in the amount of fifty-five point one one three million dollars.
Second.
Board discussion, please. Ms. Hilding?
Didn't we already vote to approve this?
It was an old business and brought forward because some board members, based on new information, might want to make an amendment to this.
So I was not here last meeting, but I do think that based on the fact, well, I guess I need to make an emotion and then I can comment on it, right? So I move that we add another four million dollars to this for some pretty serious repairs we may be looking at in Eagle River. So bringing this up to fifty-nine point one million dollars.
Second.
Ms. Hilding?
Is this Member Foster's motion that we voted on before?
This is...
Amendment?
Yes, but the, the information that we got from the district is because, and I'll have to say that I voted based on this information, was because of the timeline. And since talking with the Assembly, the timeline is not as big of an issue as maybe believed beforehand.
Madam President, may I? There was, I just want to be clear and on the record that there was actually additional information provided by administration and so that the board is fully informed of the reason why administration didn't bring it forward, of the recommendation from capital projects. And so at this time, if that's okay...
Yes.
To just share the information that they provided. George McAlas, Tom Vinessef, and Darren Parkin. I am asking for these folks to come forward as Tom Roth is at his son's graduation from West Point. So he is out of town. But there was, continues to exist some concern in regard to administration not knowing what we... what we don't know to put money towards something that we're unsure of without a full assessment. And I just wanted to get that on record.
Yes, Madam President, President, board members. So as was discussed at the last meeting, when this subject came up, there were several points that were made. Point number one is that we do not know the extent of the damage at Eagle River Elementary School. So we don't know the order of magnitude. We do not know the order of magnitude of the damage at Groening. We also have other schools throughout the district, not just in the Eagle River-Chugak area, that do have substantial damage. Even though they're functional, there are certain areas that are off limits to kids. So there is a evaluation that's being done for, I believe, about 14 schools to go in there by architects and/or engineers and to do an assessment to find out, number one, what needs to be done to these schools to bring them up to safety standards, especially those two that are closed. And then the other schools, what has to be done to go ahead and fix some of the problems that's found in them. That assessment will take some time in which to give us an idea as to what needs to be done and what the approximate dollar amount is. Right now, I don't believe anybody could tell you that. Number two is that, as was explained at the last meeting, there was an extensive look at our situation by bond counsel. And because of the earthquake, the district went to the bond counsel and asked for language that will allow the district, if the district felt necessary, to instead of using those $55.1 million associated with those projects listed on the bond, they could, in fact, delete those particular projects, either all, or some, or none, and use that money to go ahead and deal with significant issues associated with the earthquake. The bond language reads that way right now. So the board has quite a bit of flexibility, as determined by the outcome of the investigation, and also other issues that need to be addressed during the Christmas holiday period. So those are two points that were made. The third point is that the district has the potential of about $12 million of authorized but unsold bonds from 2015 through 2017, which have with it a 60% debt reimbursement. In discussions with deed, they would recommend that we close those out and we come forward to them with specific projects associated with the earthquake for them to take a look at and either approve or disapprove. However, our indications are that they would favorably look at that, depending upon, of course, what our request was. Now, with that, there would be the debt reimbursement. If you go ahead and add that $4 million plus to the current bond, that's without debt reimbursement. So those were points that basically were mentioned so that the board members fully understood what the ramifications are by adding an additional $4 million, without knowing exactly what the requirement's going to be.
May I get clarification if I put...I have Mark's original language for the amendment before. May I put that up and see if that's what you want us to...
So the question I would ask is, we know it's going to be more than the 17 million. Considering we get all of that approved through deed. The other thing is, I think we're looking at a larger cost than even 55 million if we spent all the whole 55 million on earthquake repairs. And I understand that we don't have debt reimbursement. And I will not be voting in favor of this, because I don't believe it should be directed just at Eagle River. But I do think that there's merit behind increasing the amount by $4 million, because I think we're going to need every dime we can get. And I think that the public would agree that we need to get our schools back to where they need to be.
I understand that. And the only reason that we're bringing this forward, so that everybody understands, you know, where we are right now. And again, it may be that that $4 million, in addition to what you've already got, if you were to use the full 55.1, may not be enough anyway, and you may have to go back to the voters. So that's why the administration had cautiously recommended that at least, let's make sure we know what we're dealing with before we go ahead and ask voters for an additional amount of money. I think that sums it up.
Mr. Foster.
I would encourage our collective consideration of rereading the Anchorage Daily News from Wednesday, December 12th, page A11. We are on record...the CFO is on record with the following. Aside from Greening and Eagle River Elementary, the next three Anchorage area schools with the most expensive earthquake-related repairs, replacements, and cleanups are Chugak High School, Eagle River High School, Fire Lake Elementary School in Eagle River. It's projected to cost at least $1 million to return each of the three schools to their pre-earthquake condition, Anderson said. I think we have a communications problem if we don't follow through with adding money to Eagle River.
Dr. Bishop.
Madam President, I acknowledge, you know, that those statements, but the...I mean, just so we know, the 55 million can be used for Eagle River. I mean, we have true latitude, is my understanding.
That is correct. And as was read to the board last...at the last meeting when this came up, the ordinance that was approved by bond counsel that's before the assembly makes that pretty clear. And I certainly could pass this out, or I could read it again as Mr. Roth did last meeting.
Madam President, my concern...I mean, I think the concern on the table, and both the amendment, as well as I think administration's response, are coming from the same core of, we need our voters to trust us when we say we need something or not. And so my understanding is that, you know, our team here is saying, we don't really know. We had a comment with an, you know, an amount that now we're saying, if we said it, we want folks to trust us what we want. But I don't know...my understanding is we don't have enough information to have made those assumptions, and it's probably looking at additional money rather than less in the long run.
Yes, through the President. One of the things I'd like to address is the method that we have our contractors and our architectures, what they're doing. They're looking at three different levels, and that involves cost analysis. We're comparing what it would cost just to repair the damage made, what it would cost to bring those...not only repair that damage, but also bring those schools into compliance with our educational specifications. And then comparing the costs of just bringing it into...just repairing it towards the cost of building new. So there's a lot of analysis that goes into it. So that would be a big difference in terms of decision that you'd have to make further on.
Mr. Donlin.
So as I heard the members' motion, it was to add $4 million to the bond total. It wasn't specified what for. Is the motion that you made, the motion that's before us now...
That's why I needed to clarify.
Yeah.
Can you repeat the last word we issued?
What was your motion?
Is the motion you made, the motion that's appearing on our screen now? Because I thought it was just for an additional $4 million. It didn't specify what it was going to be used for.
No, it was an additional $4 million for Eagle River.
Okay. So this is what you intended by your motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So from a procedure point of view, since this was voted down, it would take a motion to reconsider, to consider an amendment that was voted down. So it's not properly before us. First, you'd have to have a motion to reconsider the amendment that failed. And then, if that passed, then you could proceed to vote on the motion again.
Right. So... Madam President, I also want to add that I would not put Alaska Middle College. We don't own that building. We're not responsible for that building. That's the University of Alaska building.
Put it up for clarification. So if I can just clarify where this needs to be cut off, then I can just repost.
I think you need to go back to the original question.
Mr. Donlin.
Who voted in the affirmative...oh, sorry. Of the original $4 million? They need to reconsider that.
It has to be done within a certain time period, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does have to be done within a certain time period. But because of our...
I just...I've put this language up because this is the only language that I had to go with, and I thought we could modify it from here.
So if...
If you want to move something different.
So we can modify it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could...this was out of order. So the chair could rule this motion out of order, and then you could do a new motion that was somehow different than this.
Okay.
So I will rule that this motion is out of order. Do you have a second motion?
So I will move what is written here. I'd like to, to Dr. Bishop's point, I would like to take out Alaska Middle School College, Middle College School. And I would like to change the amount, that we are increasing it by 4.2 million.
You want to leave all the other schools?
You want to leave all the other schools in there?
I...we can just leave it generic at Eagle River Schools.
Chugiak.
Chugiak, right. Chugiak, Eagle River.
Okay. Period. And just a second.
So how you're changing this is by changing the dollar amount.
But then it would be 9.3, right?
Right.
And making it more generic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I still won't support this. I won't support it because it designates certain schools. And I believe if we're going to increase funding, it should be, as our bond language says, that it can go to any school that is necessary for repairs during the...
Does it have to be seconded first?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, second. Do we have a second?
Okay, Andy...
I thought Andy seconded.
The first time we...
Right.
We amended.
Okay. So based on this new amendment, then, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Then it's correct.
Okay. So now, board discussion. I will not be supporting this, only because I don't oppose the 4.2 million, but I do oppose designating it to a certain schools, because we are ASD. All of our schools are important, and I think the funds go where they're needed.
If I may ask a point of clarification from Mr. Michaelis. I think the advice you gave us at the prior meeting was we needed to designate specific projects for bond counsel's purpose.
So any change to this particular language that's currently here will go to bond counsel for...to make sure that it meets the law. So normally, it's two weeks, but I believe it could be expedited. So before the assembly tomorrow, we'll introduce what they already have. And then, of course, it will be taken up a couple of weeks after that. I suspect if the board makes a change to what's here, then that would have to be brought to the assembly's attention tomorrow evening when they introduce. So that if there's a change, it has to be introduced to the way that the board wants it. And again, there would have to be some type of bond counsel comments, so.
If I may follow up specifically, I believe the advice you gave us was we needed to identify specific schools. Is that not correct?
That's correct, because the bond...the folks that are basically buying the bonds, they want to know what to buy. And so that's the collateral, right?
Yep. That's your point. Mr. Donlin.
Thank you, Madam President. So the 4.2 million, I think I'm understanding from Mr. Michaelis's testimony, is that the amount of money that we could anticipate being reimbursed under the 60% reimbursement if we utilize these other bonds for earthquake damage repair...
So subject to state approval, there's potentially $12 million from, I think it's 2012 through 2015, that are authorized but unsold. And so that'd be $12 million if the board wanted those projects closed out. And my understanding is, they're pretty much all done. Then we would go to the state, and we'd close those out with a request that that money be reallocated to whatever projects we feel are necessary because of the earthquake. Well, we have to specify the projects.
George, I'm just trying to understand where the 4.2 million came from. Why is this motion for 4.2 million specifically?
Because it had to be different than 4, basically.
So I see this as an opportunity to increase our bond. We have a lot of damage in Eagle River. I understand we have $12 million that we had asked for in previous years that we no longer need for those projects. As we know, the bond debt reimbursement on those is subject to legislative approval. They don't have to do that, as we learned a couple of years ago, was it last year?
They've already been...
And I do believe that we will likely have more than $12 million that's left over from the past three years, and the 59 that we're talking about here. So I'm just trying to give us maximum flexibility. I am pretty confident that the flexible language that the bond counsel has given us on the original language will probably be applied to this modified language. And the municipal attorney did tell us that...or tell me that most likely...she doesn't anticipate a timing issue. So that's why I bring it forward, to give us as much flexibility as possible.
Mr. Donlin.
I would like to understand why this motion identifies 4.2 million dollars as the correct amount to add to the bond.
When we originally discussed the bond, I am very concerned that our total...that we're falling behind in maintenance. So I have been in favor of not being so concerned about retiring, putting out bonds only in the amount that we retire. And with this earthquake, with the additional damage that we have, we know that FEMA will cover some of that, but we know there will be a lot that we end up having to cover as well. And I see this as an opportunity to try to get a little bit more caught up.
I understand...Madam President, I understand that. I just want to know where the number 4.2 came from.
It could have been 5 million, honestly.
Okay. So it's not linked to anticipated debt reimbursement?
Ms. Hildy.
No.
Yeah, I don't plan to support this amendment, whether it includes specific schools or not. I'd like to wait until we know what our needs are, and then we can clearly articulate those to our community. They can know what they're voting on. We have $12 million, possible through deed, who's been very supportive of this, if we do need funds in the immediate. But then we can come back to the voters with a very clear picture of what our needs are, the trust we can build. And hopefully, and I share your concerns, under deferred maintenance and under bonding, but as we move forward over the six years, the long-term plan, I don't want to short-sell steps in building trust and transparency. Just, I mean, $4 million's a lot, but in the scope of our bonds, it's not...I'm not sure I'm willing to spend that trust.
Is there any other board discussion? Mr. Donlin.
Yeah, Mr. Michaelis has raised this possibility of utilizing these existing authorized bonds that are qualified for 60% reimbursement for earthquake projects. And if that indeed is something the administration's thinking of, what does that impact on our ability to get reimbursement from FEMA on these bonds if they're reimbursable bonds? Wouldn't we be wiser to fully not utilize those bonds, use those bonds for other non-earthquake projects, but to use non-reimbursable bonds for the earthquake projects? So they would be more likely to be reimbursed by federal and state disaster programs.
What, was there a question, sir? I'm sorry.
My question is, the lost opportunity cost of utilizing sixty percent reimbursable bonds for earthquake projects that may be one hundred percent reimbursable through other programs?
Okay, thank you, I understand. So, uh, as you know, the state could, uh, reimburse up to twenty-five percent of, uh, the costs associated with the earthquake, uh, if they agree, uh, with the rationale from, uh, the minis- uh, from the district. Uh, the same thing with the feds. They could go ahead and reimburse up to seventy-five percent, assuming, uh, that what's presented to them, uh, basically is authorized for reimbursement. Uh, the staff is going through that process now, of trying to identify some of those, uh, um, particular costs, so that the state, in conjunction with FEMA, can at least look at if the state qualifies for the threshold. So there's a threshold, uh, that's been set by the federal government, that the state has to at least achieve or go above in, uh, disaster, uh, related expenses. If the state does that by using whatever the district has, what the municipality has, what, uh, the borough has, and if they are able to come up to that threshold, which I believe is twenty-five million, uh, then the state, uh, does have the opportunity, uh, to go ahead and get FEMA funds as well. So, in answer to your question, there is that possibility of getting both state, uh, and FEMA funds if we qualify in all the areas. Would we get the total amount? Don't know, until, you know, that determination is made, and we go through the process of documenting everything that we think is an allowable expense, subject to their approval.
So...
Mr. Donlin.
So, my point here is, it's not an opportunity cost, it's a lost opportunity savings. Why would we use bonds that are sixty percent eligible for reimbursement for other non-emergent, non-emergency projects for an emergency, when the emergency expenses may potentially be one hundred percent reimbursable by the combination of seventy-five percent FEMA and twenty-five percent state funds?
I, I don't believe the district is recommending one way or the other. I think the district is trying to let everyone know that those funds are available, and the Board would have to approve if you wanted, uh, to go ahead and get realoc- uh, reauthorization for some other projects from that money. So, it's just stating the fact that the money is possibly there, uh, if it was needed.
Dr. Bishop.
Yeah, Madam President, I, I think what we're, uh, trying to identify is every possible avenue for which we could benefit in rebuilding our schools. And that will include, um, a bond, our own bond, that, uh, has flexibility, that, uh, will include now FEMA, uh, as well through the state and federal, and that we've, uh, had verbal, um, in an email, and verbal okay from Deed about those prior bonds as well. So what we are gearing ourselves up to do is to identify the need, what's the requirements for rebuilding, and then we would present back to the Board the best manner for which to have our schools fund that makes the most economic sense for us and for our community. And so, the information, I think this entire discussion, the information, is that we don't have all the information, but all of these avenues are avenues for which we are, um, traveling down that path. We have, uh, we're working on every single opportunity to put ASD in the best light. So we haven't chosen one over the other, we are just simultaneously working three avenues.
If there's no other board discussion, I'd like to call for a board vote. And thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. And that motion fails with three yea and three nay and one not-present vote. So now we will, um, do we need to vote on the main motion, since we've already voted on it? It is number forty-six, this is... Okay. So, it's the same motion, but we're, it's a new motion number, I guess, so we need to vote on the main motion? Even though we've already voted on it before? I, I, I don't know, do we need...
It's already been...
I know, we've, I don't think we need to vote on the main motion, since we've already voted on that. We were just voting on the amendment, on whether we were going to adopt this amendment into the main motion, and if that were the case, we would have, uh, voted on the main motion? So I don't make sure.
The main motion is reconsider.
So we have need...
Let's go back to the main motion.
Okay, so we'll go back to the, okay, so we'll go back to the main motion and vote on the main motion then. Thank you, Mr. Donlin. Okay, so with that, is there any non-action items that board members would like to call? Seeing none, we will move on to new business. Is there any new business by board members? Mr. Donlin.
I had, um, sent the Secretary and yourself an email identifying one, uh, proposal that I'd like the Board to, uh, take up at a future meeting. It was on the apprentice policy modification, and I provided that in writing to the Secretary to the Madam President, and I would move at this time that it be scheduled at some point in time in the next, uh, month or two months.
I believe we do have that on the amendment, or the, on the schedule, do we, Katie? Yeah.
The governance?
No, it'd be, it's been through the governance process.
Before the Board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it will, will, yeah, oh, okay, I kind of saw it on there already, for the seventh. But I, I know that we are looking at that, Mr. Donlin, get it on the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hilding? Okay. Any other new business? Okay, at this time, then, is there any other public testimony? On non-agenda or non-action items? Okay. Uh, are there any school board and administration comments?
I would like to wish everybody a merry, merry Christmas. I think everybody deserves some time off with family, and hopefully some sleep, and I hope everybody has a peaceful and restorative holiday season, and I'll see you all in the new year.
And let's hoping for a really good next year. Adjourned.